Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the City Council Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency Council Meeting in San Carlos, February 9th, 2015. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any changes to the order of the agenda?
No changes from staff this evening, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Any council members wishing changes to the order of the agenda? Mr. City Attorney, do we have a report from closed session?
At the special meeting, we had a closed session and the council's authorized city attorney to initiate litigation.
Thank you very much. Okay, on to council communications. Why don't we start with Mr. Obert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief on each of these because as I was listing them, I realized I had quite a number unusually so tonight. The council hosted a dinner for some local residents who were kind enough to purchase a dinner from the council at last year's San Carlos Educational Foundation Spring Fling. We did that a week ago Saturday. And I learned based on Cameron's efforts, who did a fantastic job cooking the main course, that parsnips are actually really cool vegetables. I had never had them before. But everybody had a great time. More importantly, the folks who bought the item had a great time, and that's really all that mattered. I also had an opportunity last night with my wife to attend the Healthy Cities Perfect Pairings fundraising dinner for their tutoring program in San Carlos. That was their first one, and actually it came off, I think, fabulously at Gusto's and Positano's. Really, really good food, great time, sellout crowd. On Saturday, I had the opportunity to be a judge for the local chapter of the 4-H organization, doing judging for their program to encourage young people to learn how to make public presentations and sell ideas. And that was a lot of fun. I actually learned a bunch of things about gardening that I didn't know, which I plan to put to good use in my garden. The last couple of other things, this is an election year. There are two seats, mine and the mayor's, that are going to be up for reelection. And something of a tradition that we established when I was on the school board is offered to meet with people who might be curious about what it's like to be a council member or an elected official, just to learn more about it, see if you want to throw your hat in the ring. That's something which I would love if the council as a whole wanted to offer to do that, but let me just extend publicly, if there's anybody who is curious, I'd be happy to meet with you individually, or we could do it in a small group setting if there are enough people who are interested, and I can share my perspectives with that. So just feel free to get in touch with me on that. The two other, the last two items, I had a good conversation today with Dimitri Vandelos, who you recall made a presentation to us a little while ago over some concerns about transparency in the way in which some planning commission items are handled relating to new hotel zoning rules. And one of the things that came up that I'd actually like to suggest that we think about is currently we have a distance rule that says when we're making a land use change or there's some property change that's going on that we're involved in, there's a certain number of feet away from the property that we mail out notices to. I'd actually like to ask that we look at expanding that whenever there's a significant, meaning multi-site property change, land use change being made. In this particular instance, it probably would have resulted in more of the folks who believe they'll be affected by hotel developments knowing about the planning commission meeting, so they could have shown up to weigh in on it. And it's really all a matter of critical mass, if you will. When you're changing something on a broad swath of property, I think it actually, it behooves us to have a broader footprint of who we notify. So I'd like to submit that for the council's consideration. And then lastly, on the Holly Street corridor, as I think everybody knows, we have a lawsuit against the city that was brought by two residents objecting to, among other things, the change in the no parking rules in the corridor that we took last July. We've made it clear that that suit is moving forward, and until it gets settled one way or another, taking, making changes to the situation is not something that is in the interest of the community. But there is one item that I'd be curious about. I'd like to find out from staff whether or not, if we were to choose to do so, if lowering the speed limit along that corridor to a residential level of 25 miles an hour, is that something we can even do? And that is, I don't know the answer to that because it is an arterial, and there may be separate rules for that. So I'd like to actually see that, see the answer to that, because I think that is something that we might consider doing even as things currently stand. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Matt?
I really don't have anything. I just wanted to comment because Mark asked the question. You'll note that University Avenue in Palo Alto is more lanes, broader corridor, speed limit 25 miles an hour. It's residential. So I would guess that it could be done.
Jeff, is that something that we need to bring up as an agenda item, or is it something that staff can study? Or what, do you need any particular direction from us?
Well, I think when it comes to an agenda item, we're always looking for direction from the council. In terms of, this seems like a rather straightforward question that we could simply answer, and I could let the full council know what the answer is to that question in terms of, you know, any laws governing how speed limits are set as they would apply to Holly.
Okay. Great. That was it, Matt? All right. Bob?
Mr. Mayor, as Mr. Obert said, we did some cooking, and last night we did some eating. So that just about covers it. I'll have some meetings coming up with Silicon Valley Clean Water, which we're going to hear from tonight, but the last two weeks, I didn't have anything beyond, I think, those two things.
All right. Thank you. Cameron?
So, yeah, I really enjoyed participating in the dinner that Mark hosted. I also attended with a number of my colleagues the San Carlos Citizen of the Year banquet that was put on by the Chamber of Commerce this year honoring Robert and Barbara Bledsoe. It was a really nice event, also honoring Devil's Canyon Brewery as the Chamber Business of the Year on Friday night. And that is all.
Thank you. And ditto for me. Took part in the meal serving, the meal eating, the Citizen of the Year. Those are all great events. The other thing I wanted to let everybody know about is that on Friday, we had some visitors from Metepec, Mexico, which is one of our sister cities. And it was a couple, Bertha, and pardon me while I look at my notes, it was Bertha Balestra and her husband Eduardo White. And she is the president of the Metepec Sister City Association. And she's also the author of about 20 books. And she gave us a gift, actually, they gave us two gifts that I want to show you. I have to be careful because one of them is very fragile. This is a handmade, hand-painted sculpture out of all clay, and it made by the locals in Metepec. And it was given to the city by Bertha and her husband, and I think it's just beautiful. And we're going to, we're going to put it on display somewhere, I think. So I'll just put it up here for the moment. And I have to be careful because one piece broke off when they were just taking it out of the, out of the package. And then the other was this book. It's kind of a coffee table book on Metepec that Bertha wrote herself. And what I liked about it is that there are, there's a lot of drawings of local art, and then there's descriptions of what goes on. And one half of the pages in English and one is in Spanish, so it'll give me an opportunity to catch up on my Spanish. But anyway, these will be hopefully on display so the public can see them, and we're very appreciative of that relationship. It was very nice to meet them and tell them how we work and learn about Metepec. All right. I think that's about all I have. Are there any comments by staff?
Yeah, just a couple of quick ones, Mr. Mayor, if I may. As you're all aware, we've been in the midst of outreach to the community and conducting a community-wide survey. We've scheduled two special council meetings for February 21st, which is a Saturday, and February 25th. So there's two opportunities for the community to come and participate and listen to the presentations, to go over the results of those surveys, and provide some additional commentary or feedback to the city council. So hopefully everyone had an opportunity to go on Shape San Carlos or participate in one of the three community forums or got a call for the survey. But if they didn't, and they still would like to get involved in the process and let the council know their feelings on the topics that we put before them and anything else that's on their mind, those will be the opportunities on the 21st and the 25th.
Great. Thank you. All right. All right. Next, we're going to move on to public comment. Persons wishing to address the city council on matters not on our agenda tonight may do so. Each speaker is limited to two minutes. There is a little device up there with green, yellow, and red lights. The green light goes on, you can start speaking, and when the yellow light comes on, you've got about 30 seconds to wrap it up. The balance of the public comments of any speakers have, if they don't speak very long and there's a number of people that want to speak on a certain issue, can be called at the end of the council meeting. Now, if the item that you are speaking on is not on the agenda, please be advised that the city council may briefly respond to the statements made or questions posed as allowed under the Brown Act. City council's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention and have the matter placed on a future city agenda or more comprehensive action or report and formal public discussion, discussion and input at that time. All right. I have, let's see, I've got just three. The first person is Bill Barons.
Mayor and council, I want to apologize for having to read to you my statement, but I do want to try to stay within my allotted few minutes.
That's quite all right.
My name is Bill Barons. I represent 24 members of the Homeowners Association at 793 Elm Street. I testified at your public hearing 14 months ago in December 2013, and you considered changes in the solid waste collection charges. I left the meeting disappointed because I learned that the franchise agreement with Redology defines every apartment with five or more units as multifamily, and every multifamily is classed by definition as a commercial account. So your hearing in 2013 did not apply to the service that we received. But I left the meeting satisfied because in the staff report was this statement, and I quote, "With this option, it is recommended that further research be conducted on the commercial rate structure during 2014, with the intent to present council with several multi-year options for cart rate alignment as part of the 2015 rate process," end of the quote. I looked forward to the hearing last December. Disappointed hardly describes my feeling when I downloaded the entire staff report, only to find nothing regarding commercial rates. In fact, the staff report reads very similar to the quote I read, except it recommends further research on commercial rates in 2015. Why am I so concerned? Last year, we, this homeowners association, paid $5,906 for solid waste collection. Two years ago, a residential 96-gallon black cart cost a customer $93, and a commercial customer $5 less, $88. Now the rates have flipped. A commercial costs $20 more than a residential cart of the same size. Over the past two years, the charge for a residential 96-gallon cart has been reduced 27 percent. If our costs had been reduced the same, we'd save about $1,600 a year. Look at it this way, next door to us on Olive Street is a four-unit apartment building. The collection truck empties its 96-gallon cart, and the charge is now $68 each month. The truck then pulls around the corner and empties our 96-gallon cart, and we pay $88 a month for essentially the same service. Both residential properties, both 96-gallon carts, $20? I can't make any sense of that. I'm here tonight to ask that you give specific instructions to your staff to include in its next solid race, rate study, the evaluation of commercial rates that was promised in 2014. If that can't be done, you can solve my problem by calling an apartment house regardless of its size, what it is, a residential property, not a commercial property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barons.
Mr. Mayor, just as an update for the city council, you did, the council did authorize such a study, and that study's currently underway, and we expect an agenda item before the city council by the end of May of this year.
All right. Thank you. Next speaker is Priya Joseph.
So I wanted to talk about four items. Item one, nothing like, nothing's more motivating than being called aggressive on a Saturday morning when you haven't even opened your mouth yet. But I was pretty pleased to meet with Bob Griselli, although it was the hardest to get hold of, it was much easier to get hold of Jerry Hill, your endorsee. You have Silicon Valley people on your council, so there's this notion of hippo, hippo, which is not, you know, it's not the highest-paid person's opinion that matters, but it's actually the best opinion that counts. So look for diversity in opinions. If there's, you know, something that somebody looks at in a new way, appreciate that. It's not about, you know, somebody telling you what to do. That was something I wanted to say. The second item, I sent you guys emails. If you read it, awesome. If you didn't, bear with me as I, you know, repeat what I emailed. So on January 23rd, the Redwood City Council actually bent back on their decision on four lanes on Farm Hill Boulevard to three lanes based on public safety concerns. I would like you guys to take inspiration from that. There also, the staff actually, much like our own city, strongly wanted them, you know, pushing them to do four lanes, which was, you know, not safe for the residents. That was item two. Item three, there's a new person who's moved on Holly. Ironically, her name is Holly Jones. She has a two-year-old son. Her home is three doors down from the 76 station. So as such, it's so overwhelming when you move on to Holly. But there was one observation she made which sort of resonated with a lot of us. It was the fact that, you know, when people merge, they are so confused. So if you can do anything about the signage, I know it's been brought up bazillion times, you know, it didn't take you long deliberation to do the ordinance, but here we are, six months, seven months, eight months, nine months down the line to do some remediation. Just a signage change would help. Number four, really quickly, I would like you guys, if you already looked at the petition, that's awesome, but, you know, some people have said in meetings that they haven't. Do go and take a look. There are two of them. One is on move on, the other one is on iPetition. So we address all kinds of, all parties goes across the cross-section. You can see there are six items there, and you will see, you know, they're not like rocket science things that you want to address. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. I think we have one more. Nolan Welch.
I'm currently a hero-registered contractor, and we've been very successful in providing energy efficiency solutions to homeowners in communities that have adopted HERO. We have also been able to expand in those communities by hiring locally. We do most of our work in Foster City and Menlo Park because they have HERO, although we reside here in San Carlos. We would like to have the opportunity to do the same in San Carlos, so I'm here today to ask that, to ask that you consider the adoption of the HERO program. Not only will you be providing a voluntary financing option to your residents, which is always a good policy, you will also be, you will also enable local economic stimulus in the form of job creation and generate a lot more revenue for the city, because HERO registered contractors pull a lot more permits in jurisdictions that have adopted HERO. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Welch. All right. Anyone else like to address? You had, I'm a little confused, you had, well, you had 8A as well. Did you also want to speak on this item? Sure. You want to wait? All right. You have two items to talk on, though? One is not on our agenda? Okay, go ahead.
My comments are laudatory and apologetic. They're laudatory because I was here on, gosh, I was here on December the 8th when you had your council reorganization. And you expeditiously handled that within 20 minutes. I'm apologetic because the following night, two or three, I can't remember exactly, members of the San Carlos City Council came to Belmont. And we held you enthralled for one hour and 10 minutes, I think. Maybe there was eight minutes of public comments. But unfortunately, Belmont doesn't move as expeditiously as you folks, and why it took 60 minutes to reorganize the city council there beats the hell out of me. But I wish they'd follow your good example.
Thank you, Mr. Keenan. Okay. And you're also going to speak later on item 8A? That's okay. Thank you. All right. The next item is the approval of the consent calendar. These are items considered to be routine and will not be enacted, or will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request specific items to be removed for a separate action. All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve consent calendar items A through I and adopt ordinance 1480, an ordinance of the city council of the city of San Carlos adopting amendments to the San Carlos Municipal Code Title 18, zoning consisting of modifications to sections 18.06030, 18.07030, 18.08030, 18.12020, 18.12060A2, 18.15110B1, 18.15020, 18.23240A, 18.15040A&amp;B1 and 2, 18.16130, 18.18020A, 18.18070B, 18 dot 18 dot 070C13, 18.18070C4, 18 dot 18 dot 110A&amp;C1, 18 dot 19 dot 050D12 and 3, 18 dot 12, excuse me, 18 dot 20 dot 030E, 18 dot 20 dot 040 dash A3, 18 dot 20 dot 070C, 18 dot 20 dot 100F3B, 18 dot 22 dot 110Q, 18 dot 1, or 18 dot 23 dot 030, 18 dot 23 dot 120, 18 dot 23 dot 140D2, 18 dot 23 150B3B, 18 dot 23 dot 160B, 18 dot 23 dot 210B1, 18 dot 23 dot 20B7, 18 dot 40 dot 200, 20, sorry, 020C, 18 dot 41 dot 020C, 18 dot 04 dot 020, 18 dot 05 dot 020, 18 dot 07 dot 020, 18 dot 06 dot 080, 18 dot 06 dot 020, 18 dot 08 dot 020, 18 dot 07 dot 1, dot 010E, 18 dot 14, excuse me, 18 dot 40 dot 050H4, 18 dot 23 dot 240A, 18 dot 20 dot 040, 18 dot 05 dot 030E2B, and 18 dot 05 dot 030E2D, and adopt ordinance 1481, an ordinance of the city council of the city of San Carlos adopting amendments to revenue and finance Title III, Chapter 3.36 Parking Exemption Fund of the San Carlos Municipal Code.
Second. Someone in the room, I think we've got some oxygen.
Yes, thank you.
That was great. All right. All right. Any discussion? Please no. Crystal?
Councilmember Gasoli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokut?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes. All right. That was a yeoman's effort. Moving on to item eight, reports to council. Reports to council are updates on key city projects by city department heads and staff and city council subcommittees. They are informational in nature, and no action will be taken on these items at this meeting.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Jay Walter, Public Works Director. Tonight, we have an update from Dan Child, General Manager of Silicon Valley Clean Water, which, as the council is aware, is the wastewater treatment facility that all of our wastewater is collected and transported to. And so I'd like to call Dan up now, and he has a presentation that he'd like to go through with you. It's about what the agency has been up to and what are some of the outlooks for the future. So I'll ask Dan to come up and instruct him in the use of this clicker, and we'll move forward.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much for having me tonight. As you see, there are 54 slides there. I promise it's going to be quick. The first, we'll concentrate on the first few, then kind of fly through the pictures in the middle, and then talk again at the end. So I hope to be able to get through this in about 10 minutes. Just a quick update, when we started the capital improvement program at Silicon Valley Clean Water back in 2008, we had 131 programs, projects that we identified, and a budget of about $340 million. Two, or four years later, we came back and had found additional projects, were up to 144 projects with a budget of about 520, or 420 million. Came back a year later, and we had reduced the projects, actually as part of your instruction when we met with you back at that time. You asked us to look at things that we could cut back on, and we were able to do that, as well as we combined some projects. However, the budget grew to about $525 million at that time. Today, I'm not here to ask for more money for a change, just wanted to kind of give you an update of what we're looking at. We do anticipate that in the coming year, we will have to go out for another bond, and I will get into that here in a minute. Just, we're running out of money that we've already approved, but it is, been built into rates that we talked about in the past, so there should be no new surprises in the coming year or two. If you look at the projects we've done, we started out with a lot of planning, a lot of design, and not a whole lot of projects being completed. And over the last few years, we've been able to gradually get more projects completed with fewer in design and fewer in planning. Now, this year, we've got a trend again that we've got a lot in planning, and that ties to the conveyance system. The conveyance system is the pipeline and the pump stations that, once your wastewater gets to our system, that we pump it out to the, to the treatment plant. And that system needs a lot of work, which we'll touch on towards the end of the project, of this presentation. So this, just a quick pie chart, so far, we've completed about $68 million worth of work. We have $110 million that are going on right now, and still have approximately $345,000 to complete in the future. When we started, we anticipated this was going to take about 10 years. Well, we're eight, almost nine years into it now, and we're less than halfway through. So obviously, we were a little ambitious in what we thought we could get done at the time. But this chart here shows how much we've been spending each year, and it's just gradually been increasing. And to date, we've got a cumulative of $199 million that we have invested in the infrastructure of the area. From a funding standpoint... From a funding standpoint, we have obtained $126 million in bonds, about $48 million from the state revolving fund, which are extremely low interest loans. And recently, the state changed their policy. It used to be that you could only get those loans for 20 years, so the payments would be about the equivalent of the 30-year payments. However, it was a shorter term, so it didn't cost you as much. However, the state now has changed to where you can get 30-year loans as well. So that's something that we will be evaluating as we go forward. And we've also received about $4 million in grants from the California Energy Commission for our cogeneration project, and also an upcoming project that is a food waste to energy project. So right now, this is a cash flow of what's going on. We, the red on the left-hand side is bond funds that are available now. We anticipate those are going to run out sometime midsummer this year. And at that point, we'll have to decide how to continue to fund, whether we will use our line of credit that we maintain, whether we'll go for further SRF loans, or future bonds is yet to be determined. But we do know that mid to late summer, we're going to have to start using funds from another source than these bonds. So what have we achieved with all this money? It's a question I've been asked a lot lately, is you're spending a lot of money, what have we done? And we've completed about 60 projects altogether, and I obviously don't have time to go through them all, but there's a few that are pretty key that I wanted to touch on. One is our solids de-watering. Part of the wastewater treatment process is to separate the water from the solid material. And in our facility, we have for years used this 1980 Andrich centrifuge that was a one-off centrifuge, the only one ever built, is built by a company called Contec at the time, and it is definitely dilapidated and not working very well. We've since that time installed rotary presses, which use about 1/4 of the horsepower, allow us a lot more flexibility in what we're doing, are a lot quieter and cleaner than the centrifuge, and a lot less maintenance on them because they turn at a very low speed. We've also installed motor control centers, updates to be able to take care of those and to, and to address the power needs, rather than having the high-power intensity of the centrifuge. Cogeneration is something that SBCW has always had on site. We have an old 350-kilowatt engine that ran for 30, almost 35 years. Did us a good job. However, if you've ever been out to our facility, you would always see a flame coming out the top of the building where we were wasting methane gas. And it seemed like a shame for us to do that. So we've recently installed a gas conditioning system to better protect the engines so they don't wear out as fast. And we installed a new 1-megawatt cogeneration system, so approximately three times the generating capacity. That system will allow us to produce almost, well, on an average day, we'll produce a little more than half of our power if everything is running right, just from cogeneration of digester gas that comes out of these, the digestors from breaking down the solids. The engines obviously generate a lot of heat, rather than just wasting that heat through a radiator like a car. We are using heat exchangers that grab that heat, and we use it to heat the digestors, we use it to heat our buildings. And in the case where we need supplemental, we do have boilers in the background as well that keep us going in those times when we have high heat demands. As I stated, the digestors produce the natural, they're the methane gas in the, that is used for cogeneration, and we've been able to clean all these digestors, refurbish them, coat them, and make sure they're in good shape for another 20 to 30 years of service. We've improved all the mixing systems in the digestors. And digestors, just a real quick, kind of a graphic description, but they're basically giant stomachs. It's where all the solids go. It's just like if we eat, they are heated, they're mixed, and they produce three byproducts. They produce water, they produce gas, and they produce solids. And all three of those are beneficially reused by us, and the water is just as treated again. The methane is used for cogeneration, and the solids are sent to land application in, up in Solano County where they are used for soil amendment to improve the farming up there. So try to get as much reuse out as we possibly can. We've also had to update our transformers in the plant, our entire power distribution system. When we built the plant back in 1981, the power distribution was actually based on a design from the 1940s, and the day it was installed was outdated, and we could not buy spare parts for it. So we've updated that and installed new maintenance, or new control systems along with that, so that we get a lot better power, control of our systems and our motors, more high-efficiency pumps. Oops, one too far. We also installed three new standby generators. So if we lose power, we have adequate power to run the entire facility. We have 3 megawatts of power, so even during storm events, when we're, everything on the plant is running, we have the capacity of doing that. We had a project to repair our sludge thickeners, our, the bio solids in the material, and we had a really strange power outage where, when the power came back on, for some reason, many parts of the equipment, many pieces of equipment in the plant actually ran backwards, and it ended up damaging these thickeners to the point that two of them could not be salvaged. We have four totally, and two of them were just totally destroyed. We decided it would make more sense to replace those units with what are called belt thickeners. They're much more effective and a lot less power consumption, since we had to replace them rather than just repair them. And we reused the tanks. This is a picture of a, of the bottom of one of those gravity thickeners that we've gone in and stripped out, broken the walls out, and we're going to use it for the control room, for the, for the belt thickeners. So we're trying our very best to get the most use out of the existing facilities and not waste anything that was spent in the, in the past. It's just another picture of that. So upcoming projects, we have a screening facility, the food waste program I mentioned, the force main I mentioned, and I've got some pictures about those. Also, we're improving our filtration system, and reclaimed water is becoming a really big issue in, throughout California as the drought is upon us, and no end is in sight at this point, that reclaimed water may become a bigger part of our, of our process. And I just wanted to kind of plant the seed that we may be hearing more and more about reclaimed water in the near future. So influence screening basically is when stuff that comes in that's so big that the bacteria can't break it down, we need to remove it. If not, it causes damage. And we've got a history of these, what are called racks, which are all the, the solid material in the, in the system that gums up the equipment and ends up breaking it down. It takes a lot of manpower to pull this material out, it clogs up pumps, and, and can be a real headache. We have a project that we're just starting right now that includes installing these automatic screens that allow us to pull the material out. At this point, we're installing the core screens to get the big stuff out, and down the road, we were going to refit these core screens into our new headworks facility that is planned as part of the, of the system, and add the fine screens so we'll be able to remove everything out in that, at that time. That's probably about five years out before the whole project is done. The food waste is an interesting project that we're doing with South Bay Waste Management Authority. They are under a mandate to remove organic waste from their garbage. And it's a real challenge for them, and one of the things they can do is get it into a digester. And we've evaluated the options, we've been working with them for almost five years now on this, and trying to come up with the best solution. And, did it again, I pushed too much. Yeah, okay. And what they've come up with is we found a way that they can remove those organic wastes, extract them, send them down to us, we put them in the digester, break them down and stabilize them, and we get more biogas off of that. They get, divert a large portion of their solids from the, from the landfills, and we are in a position where we have a much better system for our ratepayers. And what we're really hoping to do here is that by doing this, we think that there, we will be able to generate enough biogas to offset a lot of the costs for us and actually be able to keep rates down for the wastewater people. The landfill people, because they're not going to have to truck this material so far, will be able to save money for their ratepayers, for the garbage people. So in the end, all the ratepayers are going, hopefully will win by bringing this material to us, that they will save on both the garbage and the wastewater side in their rates in the long run by, by us joining forces as special agents, special agencies that work together to solve a problem. So the really nice thing is we have a lot of digester capacity at Silicon Valley Clean Water, and we have room for this. So the capital and cost in, to install the equipment to do this is relatively low. We don't need to build new tankage, we don't need to build a lot of buildings, it's just basically equipment. And it's looking like a real promising option that we're going to be able to do together. The force main is, you've heard us talk about before. Our force main is, consists of 12-foot sections of reinforced concrete pipe. It ranges in size from 33 inches up to 60 inches. The joints are every 12 feet, and it was laid in Young Bay mud. And Young Bay mud is basically a, has a consistency of pudding. There is no structural support in Young Bay mud. So this pipe is constantly moving, depending on the different forces, and when it moves, we get leaks. Some of the pipe has also had some structural issues, and we'll get to pictures of this. This was a leak we had about five years ago, right at the San Carlos pump station next to the airport, where the top of a valve blew out. It was quite a sight to see, as you can imagine, and the airport was not thrilled about that one. But that's one of the issues. We also had a situation where, after a power surge, the power went out, we had a water hammer. You all have been told to shut off your water at home slowly, so you don't break your pipes. Well, this is what happens when something shuts off quickly in our system. That pipe is a 48-inch diameter pipe, it's just downstream of the, of the San Carlos pump station, and it literally cracked that pipe in half. And the repair process for that was very elaborate. It took a lot of work to get that done, a very technical effort to bypass it and get that pipe put, repaired. We've also had pipes out in Redwood Shores near the treatment plant and up near the Nob Hills Shopping Center over the years that have broken. You can see the houses in the background, you know, if it would have been 100 yards further up the line, it would have been in the neighborhoods. This pipe took a very elaborate clamping system to put it back together. Basically, we put a bracket on both sides of the joint and pull it back together, put the O-ring back in, and hold it together so that it can't come apart again. However, in, in the governor's base situation, we went one step further. On the bottom left, you'll see there's a clamp there, and that's actually designed so that when, when the pipe moves again, because there was a crack in the bell of the pipe, that when it moves again, that that fiberglass piece will hold it together and contain the flow so it doesn't leak anymore. The last one we've had is at the treatment plant itself. On the very left, you can see a wall there. That's the treatment plant. The treatment plant's built on piles, so it stays solid, it doesn't move. The pipe is allowed to move, and it settles. It's kind of hard to see, I don't know, the, just right there in the middle, there's a crack. And that crack is big enough that I could put my whole handy into that crack, and that's where it, the pipe had broken away from the, the treatment plant. And again, we put a very sophisticated system in place to be able to fix that. We had to bypass all the flow. So the little, the pipe in front here allowed us to put a plug down in and force the water to go up over the top and come into the plant through a bypass system. So we've been looking at how to replace this pipe that is, is leaking from the Redwood Shores area. A year ago, we presented to the, to the Redwood Shores community four options for replacing this pipe. After further investigation on both the environmental standpoint and also from a public support standpoint, we eliminated the three that are dots, that they were just not going to be doable, which left one option of going, digging up all of Redwood Shores Parkway for three years to be able to install this pipe. That was not a real cost-effective method or a very popular method with the residents, as you can imagine. So we were asked to go back and look at other alternatives. As of today, we have approximately 13 alternatives on the drawing board that we are still evaluating and looking at for what makes the most sense. There's different ways of doing it. There's micro tunneling, there's open-cut trenching, there's actually tunneling, where a tunnel, you go down underneath and you come up at the other end, and slip lining. There's a lot of different options, but these are what we're looking at right now from a SEQA standpoint and from a budgetary standpoint to determine what the best method is going to be to go forward. At this point, we don't know the exact cost, we don't know the answer to, to this, but it's the reason I wanted to be here tonight more than anything is to let you know that we are still progressing, we are making headway in addressing these issues, and that we're moving forward with SEQA and permitting and budgetary evaluation on those projects. And we look forward to working with you in the future. Any questions, or?
I think we do, Mr. Childs. Thank you. Mark Olbert has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Dan. Actually, I had several questions. Let me just start, this one may actually be for, for our staff because it was part of our internal process. Jeff or Jay, do you remember, actually this is before Jay's time, which capital improvement budget numbers did we use the last time we changed the sanitary sewer rates?
It couldn't have been the most recent one from December 2014, but I'm...
Yeah.
Councilmember Olbert, Jay Walter, Public Works Director. We, we didn't use the most recent capital improvement plan figures that Dan mentioned. However, we did have in there, in our calculations for rates into the future, a $100 million cost for nutrient removal, which is still something that is out in the future for the plant. So effectively, we had a very large amount of capital that had been forecast in the three-year rate study that we did and completed.
Okay. My next, that leads into my next question, which, which would be for Dan. But is the increase in the capital budget numbers between 2012 and 2013, or actually end of 2014, of about $100 million, is that for the nutrient removal, or is that still to come?
I believe that is still to come, Commissioner. Councilman Olbert?
And, and last time I heard about this, we don't know for a fact that we have to make that investment, but the pot odds are that we probably will.
I attended a meeting last week where that was discussed, and basically, we were told to plan on it within a 10- to 15-year window.
Okay. The, let's see. The, the options for the force main, which you had a set of options, and all but one of them were eliminated, and then that one got eliminated because it would involve destroying Redwood Shores Parkway, or, or just...
It's not totally, it is, the Redwood Shores Parkway is still on the list.
It's still on the list. What, what is the, in a nutshell, what was the primary reason why the other options were rejected?
One was due strictly to the fact that nobody had ever done it before. That was to put a pipe in the levee itself. And when we looked at that, and just the risk that it came with, the, the SBCW commission said, we don't want to take that risk. Two of them were environmental, just putting pipelines in waterways and environment. The Army Corps of Engineers, when they look at options, look, anything that is in the water, they ask the question, is there an alternative? And if there's an alternative, they don't care how much it costs. If there's an alternative to stay out of water, you stay out of water. So from, from that standpoint, they eliminated those two.
And, and would I be correct in assuming that the options that are being looked at currently are likely to be more expensive than the ones that we originally had?
The Redwood Shores Parkway alignment was one of the more expensive ones at that point, and I would say that they...
I'm sorry, relative, relative to what's in the budget, let's put it that way. Is, is the budget likely to go up?
It's going to go up some, but I have no idea, and, um, I don't, I wish I knew the answer to that right now, but I anticipate they will be more expensive than what was in the budget at that time, yes. If, for, maybe I can clarify, for one major reason also is that construction costs have skyrocketed in the last two years compared to what we were doing, you know, back at that time when things were considerably better for the builder and for the, the payer than the, than the builder.
Which actually leads into my last question, which is, and if you actually have an analysis someplace that you can make available to us offline, that'd be fine. But in terms of the last incremental step of the capital budget, where it went from 420 million to 525 million, what's, what's the variance analysis on that? What drove the 100 and... What drove the $105 million increase?
What drove that? The biggest part was we had adjusted from $2,007. I shouldn't say the biggest part, but a big part was we adjusted, we had not made any inflationary adjustments from $2,007 when we did the original, so up to 2013, six years of costs. We also had more information about what we were doing and some of the projects had included, but I probably, that's all I can think of right off the top of my head, but I, there's definitely analysis that I can get to you on, on what's, what drove that.
I don't know if anybody else, I would be interested in seeing that. Mr. Mayor, I presume we'll have a discussion after the question phase?
Yes, we will.
Thank you.
All right. Is that it?
Yep.
Matt?
I just had one quick question regarding, and you may or may not know this, but I heard a presentation up in Sonoma and what they were doing with their sewer plant concerning regeneration and you spoke about taking gas, you know, off, off the lines like that. So I was just curious if you're aware of what they're doing and the extent of what they're doing in Sonoma?
I am not personally aware of exactly what Sonoma is doing. I will check into it.
It'd be worthwhile probably to check into, I, I know when I was at this, I was at this conference on, you know, green technology and all, all that kind of thing. And it seemed to me they were generating enough gas to run their, not just the plant's vehicles, but the, some of the county vehicles. So they were, they were able to get quite a bit off of it.
And one of our, parts of our evaluation on the food waste energy portion is what to do with that gas? Does it make sense to continue to generate electricity or use it for fuel for vehicles? That is one of the options, especially when gas was more expensive. Today, it's not quite as good a deal, but you know, we, none of us anticipate gas is going to stay this cheap forever, I don't think. So that is a technology. We also, SBCW for decades now has worked very close with Stanford University on experimental things with their doctorate students and we've done several different experiments over the years. And one, we're actually working with them right now is where they take the digester gas and they have developed a bacteria that consumes the gas and excretes plastic.
Wow.
So there's lots of neat things going on and we are looking at a lot of those, but it's...
And Stanford just got a grant on some type of regeneration study.
We are actually working with them on that work as well. They're building a research facility online and they've talked to us about assisting them with operations of that, so.
And just one more thing, I know, you know, Bob's retired and there's good golf up that way, so you could send him up to look at the Sonoma plant and he could, he could get in a game.
I'll see what I can do.
All right. Any other questions? Any other questions from my fellow council members?
Yes, I actually, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had one quick follow-on question, which I should remember and I don't. Dan or somebody, can you remind me what's our percentage interest ownership in Silicon Valley Clean Water?
I believe it's 17%.
Seven, so we're essentially responsible for 17% of $524 million dollars?
That's correct.
Okay.
All right. Seeing none others, thank you, Dan.
Thank you very much.
We do have a public speaker request card. Mr. Keenan, did you want to come up and talk?
The reason I came down is I was interested to see Dan's presentation and it's very efficient from an engineering perspective, as, as I would expect. He's, he's right on the ball there. Unfortunately, as I told the City Council of Belmont last year, the presentation isn't available, made available online as a semi-staff report. So members of the public don't know whether they want to come to the meeting or, or whatever. And I'm encouraging Belmont to ask for this presentation in advance of the meeting. We don't even have this presentation online after the meeting. I mean, the, the presentation of a year ago. So if you Google Silicon Valley Clean Water, you get something about 150 ducks, whatever, there's a little program there. So what I'm interested in is what about the financing of the $525 million? In Belmont, I believe we have a $250 per household, which helps us finance our share, which is a little bit smaller than 17, or quite a bit smaller than 17%, I understand. So what happens if the $525 million is, is a low-ball estimate? In fact, our finance director said last year in July, "It is likely the cost of CIP will increase with recent estimates topping $700 million." So we're, we're, if that's the case, we're all going to be scratching our head about how to find our share of the money. And we've got other infrastructure problems up there. So if there's a possibility of 100 million, I think it should be on the CIP update summary as a contingency. And I'm interested, maybe there'll be some discussion tonight about how you're going to participate in the funding of the, of the CIP. I'm going to be interested to hear that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Keenan. Would anyone else like to speak on this issue? All right. Discussion. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, the last speaker kind of touched on something that was probably, is probably the heart of what I wanted to talk about. I did have one other brief comment to make, however, for, for our staff. In the future, I would really appreciate not having these reports being as verbal only, sort of echoing part of what the speaker said. An $18 million increase in our costs from, you know, year over year is not something that I think should be verbal only. I, I would also suggest that in the future, when there are those kinds of changes, that we actually work with the, the joint venture to make sure that there is a variance analysis that actually walks through what's driving the, the change in the costs. Because that's a fairly significant sum of money. If staff were to come back to us and say, "By the way, we just increased your capital budget by $18 million. Have a nice day." And I'm being facetious, Dan, I know you're sensitive to the, the issues here. We would ask a lot of questions and we would want to have a lot of answers on, on what was causing that. I, and that really leads into my, my next comment, which is, I really hope my colleagues will join me in asking our staff to, to really dig into this pretty deep. I am, as I was listening to various comments and I appreciate Jay's observation that we essentially had a fairly big cushion in the, the earlier rate increase. I was part of voting on that rate increase and I actually was, had mentally allocated that cushion to pay for the $100 million nutrient removal, which I, we've all known is very likely to happen. So the fact that there's another $100 million at least on top of that and maybe some more on top of that is a source of grave concern for me. It's not an insurmountable problem, but it's, it's frankly a surprise and, and I would, you know, I don't care for those kinds of surprises. And my response is, rather than, you know, me or any of us individually digging into it, I think we need to have staff dig into it and come back with, with some more information for us to say, "What does this mean for San Carlos? What are the processes that's leading this? What are the risk factors? You know, what's a, what's our own assessment of the risk factors on what, what the final cost could end up being?"
Anybody else? All right. Thank you.
Is there, if I may, Mr. Mayor?
Do you want to, you want to try to get some consensus?
Well, I actually just, you know, does anybody else feel the way I do?
Anybody else agree with, with Mark on this?
If nobody does, then there's no more work for staff on it.
Well, let me speak to that then. And Jay, feel free to jump in here if you'd like to correct me at some point if I get this wrong, but our process has been to continue on with our, with our rate setting structure and every time we bring a rate adjustment to the council to be able to provide the most up-to-date information. I think still, if, if I'm not mistaken, Dan, some of the projects and changes that you've mentioned still need to be voted for and approved by the Clean Water Board as well as some of the proposed funding mechanisms. And that will come back as the board approves things, then that'll start, it'll trigger decision points for the city council and all the various agencies. Correct?
Yeah. If I, if I may, the, the concern I have, and this is always with these joint ventures, we are only a 17% voting interest, okay? So, so it's not up to us. But the process that you just outlined, Jeff, basically is an after-the-fact process. If, if, for example, the council's will was, "We really want to direct staff to work with Silicon Valley Clean Water and, you know, through our representative, Bob, on, on their board to hold down costs." That's something that we need to do before you come back to us and say, "By the way, they just approved these projects. We need to increase rates by, by 25% over the next two years." So there are some choices here that we have to make and when we make them is significant. And I guess another way of saying what I was saying a minute ago is, "I'm lobbying, urging us to investigate a little bit more now just to see what's coming down the pike so we can decide if we, we want to give that kind of direction."
Very good. I don't see, I don't see an issue with us doing that. I think we stay involved. I know our Public Works Director's member, the TAC Committee, and is up to date on all the projects and the ongoing and the planned work. So we can look at the numbers, have our finance people sit down with them and prepare an item for the council in the future. It's just a matter of timing. It's something that we would be doing anyway throughout the process, so I don't see a lot more work for staff on this other than what we would already be taking on.
Do you need any specific direction from us or is this something that you're going to?
Well, I think maybe just for the record, three, three head nods would do it, but like I said, this is something we're going to be doing anyway, so it's just a matter of timing.
All right. Any support for that?
Yeah, when I get a chance to talk later, sure.
All right. You, why don't you talk now?
I, I'd want to make sure that the council understands that we're not, the four of us that are down in Redwood City, West Bay, Belmont and San Carlos, even though it sounds like a rubber stamp, it isn't. And Dan can shake his head because he knows that every time he brings something to us, we have a, a pretty spirited discussion on some of this. And I know, I myself have raised it and I know the other three members have also raised it of, it's great to have the $525 million budgeted, but maybe we need to look at half-to-haves and nice-to-haves. And we've, we've, we've talked about that and Dan knows that. And as was also mentioned, this is, even though it's there, it has not been approved, that amount of money. And the, you know, the board takes its responsibility seriously and I would think that, and certainly I know Jay does his, his due diligence. He, he communicates with me every month or when we have our meetings to make sure that he has questions that, that come up on certain of these items. So I just want to assure the council and the public that we are looking at some of these things. Some of the things that we have to do, we have to do, like putting in the 48-inch main and whatever. The deferred maintenance in this plant, as I think been mentioned, when I came on in 2005, there were no, there were no reserves, zero. We have got, have set up a reserve policy so that at least in 25 years or 30 years when we have to do it again, we're going to have some, some backup for it. But this is, it, it's a huge, huge project and the last couple, as Dan said, the last, we got away in the first few years with some good prices and the prices have now gone the other way. But fortunately with Jay and his staff, I think they've done a great job. But I would agree with Mr. Olbert that I think we, we need to have more detail brought to the entire council. And if, you know, it wasn't an inordinate amount of work done by staff, I would certainly go for that.
Anybody else in agreement?
Yeah, I'm in agreement.
Yep, I think you've got full direction from us. All right. Thank you. All right, on to new business. Item 9A, consideration of adopting a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of 2015 general obligation, obligation refunding bonds for the purpose of refunding outstanding 2005 bonds and approving related documents and official actions.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Rebecca Mendenhall, Administrative Services Director. Before you tonight is the consideration of a resolution authorizing the refunding of the library general obligation bonds. Given the strong bond market and low interest rates right now, it makes sense to look at refunding. We met with Standard and Poor's last week and today they reaffirmed our rating of AAA. That combined with the strong bond market means we should see interest rates for the refunding at historical lows. Our financial advisor, NHA, has estimated annual savings of close to 12% or a present value savings of $709,000. Craig Hill is here from NHA, as is our bond counsel, Chick Adams, from Jones Hall, if you have any questions. Thank you.
All right. Questions of Rebecca or the other gentleman here?
If I may?
Yes, go ahead.
So the, it was 792,000, you said, is the total, or the present value of the total savings?
The present value is closer to 710.
710,000. And so that is passed 100% onto taxpayers through refunds, refunds in their property tax bill, is that correct?
Yes, they'll see savings of about 12%.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? I, I have one, Rebecca. Just, what does a 12% translate into in terms of an individual homeowner?
About $6 a year.
About $6 a year, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If, just, thank you. I just make a brief comment. I just want to thank staff for staying on top of this opportunity and we always like saving money.
All right. Thank you. Any members of the public like to speak on this issue? All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I move to adopt Resolution 2015...
Dash 12.
Dash 12. A resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos authorizing the issuance and sale of 2015 general obligation refunding bonds for the purpose of refunding outstanding 2005 bonds and approving related documents and official actions.
A second.
All right. Any discussion? All right. Crystal?
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes. All right, on to nine, item 9B, discuss banner replacement for inclusion in fiscal year 2015-2016 budget.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. City banners were installed in 2011 on poles and on key streets as part of a newly adopted City of Good Living marketing and branding campaign. Street banners are used in a number of cities around the country as a colorful and inexpensive way to communicate a city's brand and civic pride. Banners are meant to enhance our city by adding vibrancy and it livens up our streetscape and strengthens a sense of place and identity. We've been told anecdotally that the banners make people feel welcome and when newcomers come to the City of San Carlos. As the banners have weathered and faded, there's a need to replace and refresh with new designs and promote the city and the business community. Staff estimates the cost of the banner design and printing installation would be about $30,000. In conclusion, staff is recommending that the City Council provide some direction to include the replacement of the banners in the mid-year funding cycle for the FY 2015 and '16 budget. And that concludes the presentation. We're available to answer any questions.
All right. Questions of Mr. Savay?
Just quick, so this was pulled out separately, I think, because we asked you to when we were looking at the budget.
That's correct, yes.
All right. Cameron?
Thanks, Al. You mentioned redesign. Can you talk a little bit what you envision? Is it, are we staying consistent with the kind of the logo design that we have or are you going to kick off a new design process? And what's sort of the evaluation for, what's the evaluation process for choosing the design?
Well, what we did before, and I think that we ought to look at perhaps a new design and a new, fresh perspective on it. And the way we approached it before is we had some folks from the Economic Development Advisory Commission set up a subcommittee and I think we had somebody from the Chamber of Commerce with city staff and we went out, did an RFP for a local design firm and worked as a group, made a selection and then made a, that group, that subcommittee made a recommendation to the city council. So that's kind of the process that we followed before. It seemed to work pretty well.
So, I mean, do you envision and should we imagine that, you know, there's going to be this kind of three to four-year cycle of redesigning the banners on an ongoing basis or are we going to stick, you know, what's your vision here? Are we going to stick with kind of a look and feel for a decade or? Are we going to stick with kind of a look and feel for a decade? It seems, you know, I, having served on the Economic Development Commission at the time, you know, it was a pretty long process to come up with that branding, so I'm not saying it's a bad idea to redesign them, I'm just wondering, you know, are we going to go through that long process every time?
No, I think the brand is in place. I think the brand is solid. I think it is a decade-long brand, I believe. I feel very strongly about it personally. I think it's been very effective. So from a brand, the reason that I think it took so long is because of that, and because of all the research that went into it. I think this is more of an ancillary, you know, offshoot of that, and it's more about getting the brand out there, and it's another method of marketing, very inexpensive way to do it. And it's nice to refresh these things every few years, I think. I think, personally, again, that these, the design that we have is a very good design, but it's not to say that we couldn't refresh it and do something new and different.
Okay, all right, thanks.
All right, Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, this is a question for my colleagues. I appreciated Matt's reminding us about it having been pulled off, but I had a follow-on question. As I recall, we had quite a bit of discussion about whether this should be included in the budget or not. What was the general sense of why we asked to have it brought back? Not the fact that we had it brought back, but why? I had thought we were, there was not strong support for doing it. And it was, pardon me, there was not strong support for doing it by the council, and it was staff who basically was like, well, we would like to come back and revisit this issue.
Well, I can take a stab at that.
Go ahead.
Unless the mayor wants to, but, you know, I think that what, there was a good deal of discussion at the budget hearing, and I think that we came to a very close vote at that meeting, and I think that, you know, it was sort of a swing vote moment there, although it did get taken off the budget. So the final vote was, I believe it was a 3-2 vote to not support it. But I think after that discussion, there was some interest in bringing this back. We heard ancillary, you know, interest in bringing this back and just taking another shot at it, essentially.
Did one of us, did one of us ask to bring it back?
I believe I did.
It was the council that asked to bring it, asked to have this brought back and revisited. It's just been some time since then, because, you know, the banners didn't need to be immediately replaced, so this wasn't an urgent item, and we got busy with a number of other things, and so this has actually just slid on the agenda for a while.
Fair enough.
All right. Anybody else have any questions about? All right. That's on another one. Any members of the public wish to address us on this item? All right, nobody?
Mr. Mayor, I move to request staff to include the banner replacement for consideration in the fiscal year 2015 to 2016 budget.
Is there a second? Well, I guess I'll second it.
You can do that.
All right.
Maybe I can speak on behalf of the motion.
Absolutely.
So-
I will follow you.
I was initially with a lot of my colleagues in being a critic of the banner program, and I think I was looking at it from a perspective of return on investment. You know, it does seem relatively expensive to be spending $30,000 on banners, and it's hard to imagine, you know, that the money, that there's a direct connection between that, and given that we basically make, you know, one cent on the dollar for every sales tax transaction in town, you know, the idea that we would get that money back seemed a little dubious. I would have to say that it came out of a mindset, and I think we've all been in a mindset, that economic times have been tough, and we got to save every dollar that we can, and I think, in general, that's the right approach. However, I do feel that in the last, you know, year or two, it really feels like something has kind of tipped in the economic momentum of our town, and the level of development, new businesses moving into the downtown, new businesses moving into the east side, feels like there is a general momentum and there is energy out there. And so, and given that, and given the increased economic development-related revenue that's coming into the city, I do think trying to continue to brand the city and maintain a sense of place that's commensurate with a lot of the investment that's going in in Redwood City and other places is an important thing for us to do. So I've kind of come around on the banner program, and I think, well, you may not be able to say we're going to get every dollar back that we spend on it. I do think it contributes to our overall economic development plan, and I think it has an impact.
All right. Anybody else?
Yes, actually.
Okay.
I was not, I wasn't strongly opposed, but I was not supportive of this when we discussed it during the budget review cycle. I remain unsupportive of it, not strongly so. I believe that in this day and age in particular, given the importance of e-commerce and online life, that if we were looking to spend some additional money, there are probably better places to spend the $30,000 than on banners, which I still believe are not particularly well noticed, or actually particularly much in the way of a business attractant in our town, or for our town.
All right. Anybody else? Matt?
I'm more of a mind to not put it in the budget and see what kind of reaction we get, because, you know, it's, we don't really have much idea of their positive effect, and the best way to figure out if they mean anything to anybody is not put them up for a year. So I'll be voting against it, but only on that, with that thought in mind, that it would be something that we try not having, and see what kind of reaction we get.
Okay, Bob?
I was, I think the, sort of the major opponent of this, I just, I just feel that people, when they drive, should be looking at the cars in front of them instead of the banners, but-
You mean their cellphone?
Or their cellphone, right, and they're texting, but, I mean, I think this is an item, and again, everybody has a personal opinion. I mean, I can go through 1,000 budget items, and you could say, I like that one, I don't like that one, I like that one, I don't like that one. This one, just for some reason, has hit a nerve in me, and I just think it's a nice-to-have, and even though we have, and I certainly agree with my colleague, the economics of our area have gone up, our budget's in much better shape, but in this case, I can't, as I didn't months ago, I won't be supporting this item.
Can I?
Yeah.
Given the comments that have just been made, I wonder if I might make a suggestion, which is, you know, there is a proposal that staff is working on to create a Business Improvement District. And, you know, to me, the kinds of things that that Business Improvement District is going to do for downtown is, you know, beautification, landscaping, and I kind of put banners into that general category. So I wondered if I could persuade one of my colleagues, who is potentially softly unsupportive of this, if instead we modified it to say that we cut the budget in half and said that the other half of the budget would have to be paid for by the Business Improvement District, would anybody be willing to go along with that?
Can I offer a friendly tweak on that?
Sure.
Rather than cut the budget in half, because I thought Matt's point was well-taken about not knowing exactly what the impact of this is, and of course, it's hard to tell with this kind of thing, put the program, make putting the program contingent upon finding that money. In other words, not just launching it, seeing if we can raise the other half, but basically say, if we can't get commitments for half of it ahead of time, then we don't do the program.
Yeah, I mean, the argument would be, the counterargument would be that, you know, the banners extend beyond just the core downtown, so, you know, that's why I'm kind of saying, half of it would be paid for by the Downtown Business Association, the other half would be paid for by the city, to pay for banners in areas other than downtown.
I'm willing to be flexible about us kicking in half of it.
Yeah.
I'm basically saying that I would just not like to see it, you know, half the banners put up and say, well, we couldn't raise the other $15,000, so we didn't do it. I'd rather have no banners if the business community is not willing to support kicking in some of the money for it.
Right, and I think that's reasonable. That's what I'm proposing. I think the question to Al is, if we did an amendment like that, would we be able to maintain the banner program under the current budget levels until we have a chance to see if we can get a Business Improvement District going? Or would they have to come down for some period of time?
I mean, they still have some life in them, so I think we could leave them up for a while and get through the Downtown Business Improvement District process, and just kind of throw it out there. If there's interest by the council, we could throw it into the mix and just say, hey, look, the city would put in half the money, you know, if you guys are interested, ask part of your Improvement District. So I think they could, they could certainly last for a little while longer, and it's short enough to where we can get that Business Improvement District underway.
I think Matt had his light on. Yeah, and then, and then Mark?
Number one, I'm not sure that half the banners are in the Business Improvement District area, whatever that's going to be. We haven't decided what that's going to be, I don't think. And number two, whether we're spending, you know, our money, which is the public's money, or half of it comes from our coffers and half of it comes from someone else's, or the Business Improvement District that doesn't exist yet, to me, it doesn't matter. I still think it's worthwhile going through the test of not having them and seeing, you know, if we get a bunch of emails about where the banners go, that tells us something. If nobody seems to notice, that tells us something else, so.
Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Matt, I think that's very accurate. I would just, the reason I thought that I found Cameron's proposal attractive is, it's sort of a bit of a reverse. It's going to the business owners and saying, ahead of time, hey, if you think that this is valuable, and you're willing to actually put money in on it, not just tell us it's valuable, you're willing to just put some of your hard-earned money into it, then we'll sort of, we'll match it effectively, okay? That's another way of doing market research. It's not waiting for emails to come in of people saying, why'd you take the banners down? It's saying, are people willing to put cold, hard cash behind the belief that they actually think it's worth something? But I see where you're coming from. It's just a different way of doing it.
Well, since I'm one of the people that was one of the proponents of this, and it's an outgrowth of the Economic Development Advisory Commission, and I think I was on the commission when this idea was thought of, I agree, it's really difficult to measure passive advertising. But it says a lot about the city. It says that, you know, we are proud of the city, that we want businesses to come here. There's no way to measure how many businesses have decided to come here because they saw a banner. I mean, it seems kind of a silly thing to say, but when you're looking for a place to park your business, you look to see what sort of messages of invitation are out there for your business. Is this city open to do business? And I can't tell you if Devil's Canyon came here because of the banners, probably not, you know, it was probably because it was a great, a great space that became available, or some auto repair shop. But when you're looking for places to relocate, you look at the atmosphere of the city. To me, this is part of the atmosphere. Is the atmosphere inviting? Is it not inviting? I think this is, this is really a very inexpensive way of saying, we're proud of the city, please come here and do business. And I think it's, it would be a mistake for us not to have some sort of arrangement, whether it comes half from business, or all from the city, or something. I think we get money back from this, I really do. I just think it, it's, in light of the fact that we have turned the city around in the last few years, and we've saved a lot more money in the last year or so than we thought we would, and our budget is doing well, I think this, to me, this is no time to stop. This is an important, a small but very important cog of making, of sending the message out to enterprises that San Carlos will always be open for business, and that we want people to come here, we want people to eat here and shop here, and live here and play here. All of those things, I think, are very consistent with our long-term and short-term goals, so. However this measure gets put together, I think we should support it.
Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make my final pitch. I think the council has known my position on this. I think the mayor did a good job, and Cameron, in defending the motion, and I certainly understand the council members' reasons for not wanting to move forward with this right now. But something Matt said just a minute ago triggered a thought in my mind that I wanted to share with the council before you voted, and that has to do with the tax revenue that the city receives, and the expenditures primarily for which we spend our tax revenue on. Most of our expenditures are designed to serve the residents of this community. Over half the tax revenue, or just about half the tax revenue that the city gets to do that, comes from the business and commercial community, and this is, you know, one of a very few number of programs that are really geared towards economic development and business development in general, in addition to sort of the quality of life and look and feel of the community, which I think benefits the businesses as well as the residents equally. So, you know, from a cost perspective, I just wanted to put that argument out there for the council to consider.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Mark?
Yeah, just briefly, I appreciate the comments that are being, a comment under the question, I appreciate the lively discussion on this one. You know, I do feel San Carlos is open for business. I think we've always been a fairly business-friendly community, and, you know, to the point about it being a relatively small amount of expenditure to do this, I, my main concern is, I actually don't, you know, my gut tells me that it's actually not a terribly significant item, and that the money would be better spent someplace else. That's part of why I found Cameron's idea attractive, to see if the other business leaders are willing to put money behind it. My question basically is, since we essentially had a motion and a second, and now we had an amendment-
Would you care to make an amendment, or?
Well, I think you made the amendment.
Okay. Can I amend my own motion? Greg?
Oh.
I hadn't thought-
It would be essentially a substitute motion based upon the discussion, and then there would need to be a new second for the substitute motion.
Okay.
So you can, so the short answer is, yes, you can.
Well, I'm happy to do that. Did you want to finish your comment, or?
My comment was done, that was the question. I actually feel happier if you did it, just because I think you have a clearer view of what you're trying to articulate.
Yeah, I mean, what I would articulate is that the budget for banners be reduced by half, and that staff seek to fill that reduced budget through the proposed Business Improvement District.
Could I offer an additional suggestion to say the Business Improvement District or some other outside funding source?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I don't care if the chamber does it, or whoever.
Right, yeah.
All right.
Do I have a second?
Yeah, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? All right, Crystal?
Councilmember Grisilli?
No.
Councilmember Gocott?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes. Okay. Moving on to item 9C, consideration of introducing an ordinance updating the municipal code to include a vicious animal owner restriction.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council- If I may, I will present from the dais to the right. What you have before you tonight is a proposed amendment, amended and restated animal control ordinance. The main changes to the ordinance are to add some provisions regarding further regulation of dangerous animals, to add some provisions regarding dog owner accountability and liability, some additional fee and licensing requirements, and to provide for dogs in outdoor dining areas consistent with a recently enacted state law. The, I'll take the last item first. The recently enacted state law authorizes, or provides for regulation, provides for the way cities can regulate dogs in outdoor dining areas, but the city has a choice. You can either prohibit dogs in outdoor dining areas completely, or enact the state law. So we have allowed dogs in the outdoor dining areas on a case-by-case basis by the restaurant owner, but this is, I think, intended to create a uniform statewide rule if you're going to allow dogs. The main, the cleanup of the ordinance came as a result of just some of the city's recent experience with- experience with dangerous animals and how we handle them. And it seemed like since the ordinance hadn't been updated in quite some time, in over 10 years, it was time to look at those issues and address them. So the council might recall that we've had some recent problems with animals and dangerous animals, and that it became clear during that process that we had some deficiencies, and that this ordinance amendment is intended to address that issue. Couple of issues I want to bring to the council's attention in the ordinance. After it was posted, we, there's a couple of typos that I wanted to just bring to the council's attention. They're very minor. The first is regarding the age of animals that can be kept without a permit. And it's, there's one reference to a change from six months to four months. And then the, there's one reference that was changed to four months, but the very next paragraph, and I'm trying to find it, it's quite a long ordinance here.
Can you give the section number?
Yeah, it's, I'm sorry, I just found it. It's section 6.04.320, Keeping of Other Animals Permitted. So offspring of dogs and cats, under subsection B, the text of the code had six months, and that section should have been changed to four months as subsection A is changed to four months. The idea being there that keeping dogs that are, a large number of dogs from multiple litters could become a nuisance, and we're trying to address and encourage owners who have dogs that have bred or cats that have bred to take very affirmative steps to remove those animals from the household during that time. There's a typo, a code reference at section 6.04.130. In the last line of that section, it says, it refers to liability outlined in section It should be .095.
Or it's just that the section should say .095 and not .091?
Yes. There was just a typo there. And then under section 6.04.380, I'm recommending a change in the text beginning at line two after the word permuti, just before where the red line is, if you're looking at the red line version. Instead of saying after permuti, including permuti of a dangerous animal, that would not be included, and we'd change it to premises of each dangerous animal or other permuti at least once each year. So we're trying to focus that section on just dangerous animals. And those are the suggested changes to the ordinance. I'm available for any questions the council may have.
All right. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Greg. Jeff and I actually had a pretty extensive discussion about this ordinance going through it. So let me just ask a few questions here to make sure they're on the record and that the community is aware of them. I noticed we added a section on liability, spelling out the liability of a dog owner. And when I saw that it was added, the first thought that occurred to me is, hmm, I wonder why it wasn't in there before. So...
Well, the answer to that is, the 2005 ordinance is based on a model ordinance that circulated throughout the county. And so the city adopted that model ordinance, and that was what was presented at the time. That was something that we noticed too when we were reviewing the ordinance, that we didn't really have an explicit statement that says, hey, if your animal harms someone or their animal, we wanted to have a specific statutory provision for that. It also covers a situation where if the, if someone somehow decides that the city is a potential defendant, there's a liability protection for us, that means we have expressed indemnity against the dog owner if the city somehow is named as a defendant in such a suit.
And absent, that second point, which I take and understand the significance of, it isn't that adding this, it isn't that prior to adding this language, the dog owner had no liability. It just, this is clarifying it and addressing the second issue.
That's correct.
Okay. There's also a limitation in, at least in one section in here, that talks about not being able to have more than two dogs per household, I guess, essentially.
The change that you're referring to, and thank you for bringing that up, the old model ordinance that we adopted allowed up to two dangerous dogs per household. This, the ordinance amendment before you would allow only one dangerous dog per household. There's another limitation in the code that says you can have two dogs or two cats or two dogs and two cats, excuse me, in your house. And if you want to have more than that, you have to come in for a permit. So you're not...
Oh, I must have misread it. I thought it said that even with a permit, you couldn't have more than two and two.
There's a, I could see why that would not be readily apparent, because there's a generic provision that says if you want to do anything outside what this ordinance allows, you have to come in for a permit.
I see. So you'd need to read both pieces. One of the other things that we added was provision spelling out, and I believe this was just in the context of dangerous animals, required minimum liability insurance for the owner of a dangerous animal. And the rationale behind adding that was...
That's public protection. Hypothetically, you could have a dog owner with no liability insurance to protect the members of the public from a dog that might be dangerous. And if they don't follow the provisions of the ordinance for public protection, we wanted to make sure that anybody who had a dog, remember, a dog has been declared a dangerous animal's been through a hearing process, and that dog has been declared dangerous. So when that happens, if you want to keep the dog in San Carlos, you're going to have to have liability insurance to the satisfaction of the city.
Okay. And my last question is in section 604.140, where it talks about restrictions on future ownership. The language that's in here talks about restricting ownership of the same species and breed for a period of five years. I thought that the latest thinking on this matter was that if a dog ended up being declared vicious or dangerous, that it was more likely the result of the way the dog had been treated, and in that sense was sort of independent of the breed. It traced back to the human being, not the dog. So I was curious about why we have the approach that we took here.
Well, we, that's a provision that we felt that it was important to specify that, because it could be, there could be a lot of scenarios where someone is focusing on a certain breed, and we wanted to have the added flexibility to focus on that. But it's something that you don't have to have in the ordinance. If the council believes that just identifying the dog owner and having other dogs, we could remove that portion. But I think it felt stronger to me to have that ability to focus on a breed that that particular owner is having a problem with.
My issue with that, I understand that, my issue with that is that, right or wrong, what I was thinking of would require more redrafting, which would be to distinguish between dangerous and vicious. In other words, that if an owner has a dog that's at the second level, which is vicious, that they be restricted from owning any dog for a period of time. Because a dog can be declared to be dangerous that, you know, that is dangerous, but it's not at the level of being vicious. So I'm not sure that's something I'd be comfortable editing on the fly.
Well, you know, I was just talking to Greg about this. The way I read it, I think the word breed is actually completely irrelevant, because there is, you know, if the species is canine, then it doesn't matter what kind of canine it is.
Okay.
And so the way I read it, it actually, you know, species makes sense, because you may have, you know, vicious dog, and we may say you can't own a dog in the future. But, you know, we might be okay with a hamster or a parakeet.
Fair enough. And Greg, you're comfortable with Judge Malpe's interpretation here?
That's what I was trying to say, but Jeff was more direct. We don't, you could delete the phrase "and breed" if you just want to focus on the species. And there are other species that could theoretically be dangerous, you know, that people keep as pets, too. So that would be, there may be other species that don't have breeds, for example. So I agree that you could delete those two words.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Bob?
Thank you. I just had a question. I guess section 604.040, as there's dog licenses, not having a dog, I don't know what the rules are. What is the license fee for a dog? Yeah. Sorry.
You know, I don't, I can't tell you the number off the top of my head. It's not very much. I think it's in the neighborhood. Tara, do you happen to remember?
That's okay. I mean, it's like 20 bucks.
20 bucks.
I was just curious. I didn't know what it was. That's all.
All right. Any other questions? I have one. I'm struggling with this difference between dangerous versus vicious. Are there legal definitions? Does the judge decide it? How do you know?
Well, how that's decided is at an administrative hearing. And the administrative hearing officer, it could be the city manager or his or her designee, or we have a contract with the County of San Mateo to conduct hearings. It could be, but it's set up that the city manager can decide who is going to hear any particular matter. Vicious animals, under our code, if a dog is declared vicious, it is not allowed in the city of San Carlos. Permit otherwise, cannot be in San Carlos. The dog has to be removed from the city. Dangerous animals are allowed with a permit. And it's a matter of degree, and the code has the definitions of what the difference is. But generally, a vicious animal is one that's attacked a person or another animal and caused injury. A dangerous animal is more of a threatening animal. It's done something that has scared people, but it didn't really hurt somebody. I think that's the basic layperson definition.
Kind of like the difference between assault and assault battering.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. All right. Matt?
Just a quick question. The role of the animal services officer is to, when we read through this, is exactly what you talked about? If you have an animal or if you get a complaint from, say, a neighbor or something, then to determine what that animal is, if it's dangerous or vicious?
There's a preliminary determination by the animal control officer that becomes basically a recommendation to the hearing officer. So if you had an animal control officer who was called, made a call that a dog had bitten somebody, for example, the animal control officers is the first officer on the scene, maybe technically a 911 call is made, and the police are there first. But the animal control officer is the officer in charge of the animal. They have the ability to detain animals, and they have the right equipment to put them in their vehicle and take them to the SPCA facility where the dog can be impounded pending the hearing. The hearing is actually a separate determination of whether the dog is dangerous or vicious.
Hearing before...
Either the city manager or a hearing officer that the city manager designates.
Okay. So if somebody owns a certain breed of dog, for instance, and, you know, some of these breeds can get pretty expensive, and then it's determined that it's, to use the language you used before, a vicious animal, I think? So now you have to get rid of your, you can't have that animal in the city anymore. Does that person have recourse? I mean, let's say they spent, you know, $1,200 on an animal, and now they're told, you can't have that animal anymore. Do they have any recourse in the courts or what?
Yeah, they would. Someone could bring a writ and make a claim that the hearing wasn't conducted correctly, or they, it wouldn't have anything to do with the value of the dog. It's just whether or not the dog qualified to be a vicious animal.
Okay. All right.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Does anyone wish to speak on this item? All right.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to move to introduce ordinance...
1482.
1482, an ordinance of the City Council, City of San Carlos, amending and replacing San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter 6.04, Animal Control Concerning Dangerous Animals, Dog Owner Accountability and Liability, Fees, Insurance or Licensing Requirements, Dogs in Outdoor Dining Areas and Other Cleanup Provisions.
And through the chair, Mr. Mayor, there was a number of amendments that I mentioned. I'm wondering if that's included in the motion, the amendments to the text of the code.
I don't have any amendments. Did you want to make some amendments?
In my staff report, I was referring to about four amendments. One was a text amendment, one was a couple of typos, and then...
I'm sorry, I apologize. For the text and typo ones, fine, but there are no other substantial ones.
That's right. That's what I was talking about.
Okay, sorry. With those inclusions. Sorry.
All right.
Would my colleagues accept a friendly amendment to delete the language, the phrase "and breed" from 6.04.140?
I don't, I don't. No. Leave it the way it is. Make another motion.
Okay. I'll make the opposite motion that Bob did with the, including Greg's suggested amendments, and also including deleting the two words "and breed" from 6.04.140.
There a second on that?
Give it a second. I'm looking at it. So...
Just for clarification, Mark, can you remind us again specifically where that language was?
Yes. It's, if you count the red line, some of which have strike-throughs, it's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, the seventh line down, or the third line from the bottom of the first paragraph, that line itself reads ownership of other animals of the same species and breed for a period of five years. And I would just strike "and breed," so it would read ownership of other animals of the same species for a period of five years.
I apologize. What section is that again?
6.04.140.
Through the mayor, and I'd just add, deleting that language will have no substantive effect on the ordinance. So if the council wants to remove it, that's fine. It's really saying the same thing twice when it comes to breed. So, and I can understand the council's desire to not want to single out breeds. You're really singling out species.
And owners.
Then I'd be happy to second.
All right. Motion and a second. Matt?
Yeah. Can we discuss it?
No. Yes, absolutely.
So I do see there being a difference, because it's saying, after opportunity for hearing and a finding of good cause, shall be subject to restrictions on his or her ownership of other animals of the same species and breed. That word "and" is very key, because what it's saying is, if you just, if we change it, if we take that out and breed, then somebody who's, let's quit hiding the elephant in the room here. If somebody owned a pit bull, and it was deemed vicious, and it attacks, you know, because it attacked somebody downtown, they took it with them dining, you know, at town, and the pit bull got up and attacked somebody or attacked another dog, now that person can't own that particular breed. But if they wanted to go buy themselves, you know, a shih-tzu, they could, because it's not the same breed. But it is the same species. So I think we should be careful about taking that out.
That is, that's the difference between the language. I think that's well stated.
Right. And just for clarification, the reason I'm proposing that is, what I've read most recently, the thinking on this matter, is that the risk factors, it's not the breed, per se, that causes the risk. It's the way, it's the human ownership of the dog. And that's why I'd like to remove the "and breed" language.
So if I can follow your comment, Mark, through the chair?
Yes.
What you're saying is, somebody who would abuse a pit bull, for instance, to the extent that it becomes a vicious dog, could also mistreat a Shih Tzu. It's not going to become a vicious dog necessarily, because they're just, it's not in their nature. But for the sake of the dog, not necessarily for the sake of the public, is why you're saying that?
Well, it's for the sake of the public and the sake of the dog. Because you notice there's no language in here that talks about breeds that may be very hard to turn into vicious animals. Okay? And, you know, we can make this as arbitrarily complex as we want. I'm looking to try and strike a balance between simplicity and recognizing that, again, from the research that I've read, it's the human owner that's the culpable factor here.
I see what you're saying.
And I think your point about not having the dog be abused, a subsequent dog be abused, is important.
You, the discussion just pulled me back over, so, because I wouldn't want to see somebody who abused a pit bull to the extent that it becomes a vicious dog own any dog.
Right.
Yeah.
All right. Any other discussion? All right. I believe we are voting on Mark's motion.
Councilmember Grisilli?
No.
Councilmember Gocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
All right. I guess that means we don't, that's it, right? We don't vote on the next one. Okay. All right. Moving on to Item 9D. This is a consideration of approving a resolution amending compensation provisions of the city attorney's personal services contract.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to leave the room while you're considering this item.
All right. Thank you.
Well, since Jeff has started making legal interpretations, maybe we can, you know...
I will be presenting. I'm not allowed to until he's actually out of the room.
Does he have to close the door after?
No. He does not have to close the door. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of City Council, Jeff Malpe, city manager. Before you this evening is a contract amendment for your city attorney, as you're aware, the council reviewed Mr. Rubin's performance as part of their closed session recently, and gave Mr. Rubin's a very favorable evaluation. Greg is asking that his contract be amended to include cost of living adjustment of 2%, which would apply both for the retainer portion, as well as the hourly service rate, and adding language that in the future, his contract be adjusted for cost of living each year in association with the same cost of living adjustment, if any, that is granted the management unit of this city. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right. Any questions?
Yeah, I have one. The retroactive language, can you give reason for why that's in there?
Yeah. I think that language, or the date, rather, just mirrors his last adjustment from a year ago. And as the council might remember, this was on a couple agendas earlier in the year, and the council meetings just ran late, and the council had rescheduled the evaluation, pushing the process back. So any time, you know, granting that is, you know, obviously subject to the council's discretion, but it would be, it would be in line with other similar decisions the council's made in the past, to keep the contract on the same timeline and adjusted.
I know it's a very short timeframe.
Right.
But the concern I have, and you could please comment on this if you would, just the idea of retroactivity, then when we get into, you know, big employee groups negotiating, we've always, it seems to me we've always had a policy of not doing retroactive, especially, you know, now, again, this is like, almost a few days, but it's still the same policy. And when we are negotiating contracts, and we get into three, four months, six months, then it really is an issue.
Through the chair, could I make a comment, please?
Sure.
I think the city manager, Mr. Gocott, really hit the nail on the head. We pushed it back. If we had voted on it, we wouldn't have this issue. So I don't disagree with your comments, but I think we pushed it back. If we hadn't pushed it back, I think there's a lot more to talk about. But I really believe that, since we did it, I think it's only fair to, you know, we would have voted on this at a much more reasonable time.
Yeah. And just to answer your question real quick, Matt, you know, I think it would always be the city's position in negotiating formal labor contracts that we would not do that, subject to how the process goes out. Because in negotiating a formal labor contract, obviously, you're dealing with the union, and, you know, there's a lot outside of the council's control. Whereas negotiating contracts with your city attorney or your city manager, you know, that tends to be a very quick back-and-forth process. And so, you know, for, you know, you look at something like this instance, it's really, the reason it's arriving to you now has, just has to do with agenda timing, as opposed to sort of a contract holdout and a prolonged negotiation, which would be where, that would be the major distinction I would draw.
So for your sake, Bob, I raise it as an issue, just so it's out there, so it doesn't look like we're setting some other kind of policy. But I understand what you're saying. You're right. It's all in our hands. But just so it's clear.
Okay. All right. Many members of the public wish to speak on this? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2015 dash...
13.
13, a resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, amending contract for personal services, parentheses, city attorney.
Second.
All right. Motion and second. Any comments? The only comment I'd like to make is that I think we're lucky to have Mr. Rubens. We've seen comparative analysis. Other cities spend a lot more on city attorney services, and we've gotten solid counsel for many years.
I'll second that, too.
Okay. Crystal?
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Gocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Okay. Item 9E, consideration of adopting a resolution declaring a drought emergency to implement the water conservation enforcement measures under Municipal Code, Section 8.10, effective March 10, 2015.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. My name is Tara Peterson. I'm the assistant to the city manager. And before you this evening, we have a discussion and recommendation to consider declaring a drought emergency. So we are in the fourth year of the drought. Currently, the Sierra snowpack's about 88% below normal. While December 2014 was very wet, January 2015 was the driest and hottest in the Bay Area ever recorded. As of the 1st of February, we've had a little bit of rain since then. Local water storage is 58% of maximum, and total system-wide storage is 55% of maximum. The SFC, the SFPUC does not plan to restrict water use to its customers in 2015 beyond the 10% voluntary cuts that are already in place. But they will be revisiting this in April or May after the rains have ceased for the winter. The city of San Carlos and its residents and business have been asked to reduce water use by 20%. And fortunately, according to Cal Water, we are currently meeting that goal. But every community and water agency should be considering next steps as this drought continues. We do have some partnerships. We partner with Cal Water, who continues to take the water waster reports, investigate them, and educate wasters. And there's also Basca, which offers a lot of programs to encourage conservation. Lawn Begone is one of the programs that they oversee. In November, council passed ordinance 1479, which established water conservation measures in the time of drought or emergency, which gave the city some tools for enforcement of water restrictions. But the ordinance requires a declaration of a drought emergency by council to implement these measures. Some of the penalties for violators include $100 for the first violation, 200 for a second violation within the same year, 500 for each additional violation within the same year, and each day a violator continues the unlawful action, he or she is guilty of a separate offense. Impacts on the city. Departments that will be enforcing this ordinance have indicated a need for additional staffing and additional resources. Direct costs will include a hotline to take reports, providing outreach materials to educate the public about this new ordinance, and the new restrictions, and the consequences, some cost for travel to investigate some of the complaints, and developing and printing of citations. Staff plans to return to council with a request for funding if council does elect to move forward this evening. So our recommendation is council consider declaring a drought emergency to activate the enforcement measures of ordinance 1479, effective May 15 of this year. And with that, that's the end of my presentation. I'll entertain any questions. We also have Mr. Tony Carrasco of Cal Water here with any specific questions that I might not have the information for.
All right. Thank you, Tara. Wow, we've got a lot of people want to ask questions. Mark, I think was first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we have a, two questions. Do we have a rough sense of what the enforcement cost would be, Jeff?
A very rough sense. I would say $50,000 or less, including marketing material. You know, there's a lot of postage and mailing, that kind of thing. I think our, what we're going to do is explore through the county, who we contract for code enforcement services about the addition. And then it's really ultimately going to come down to, once it goes into, once we've done the outreach and it goes into effect, how many cases do we really have? And that's, you know, that's going to drive the cost. I would assume that even if the cost is high, it'll fall off rather quickly, once enforcement starts, so...
Would it be staff's expectation or plan to discuss some kind of cost-sharing arrangement with Cal Water?
Oh, we could certainly do that.
Those are my two questions.
All right. Bob?
I'm confused, but what's new there? The last slide says, effective May 15. The staff report says March 10. I'm sorry. What are we, what's the difference here?
No, you're absolutely right. As we investigated a little bit further, we realized we did need to do a little bit more homework, to come up with some numbers. And also, the thinking, for me, anyway, Jeff could weigh in, but is to give us a little bit more time to see how things shake out with the rainy season.
Okay. So if we adopt this resolution, it'll be May 15, 2015, not March 10?
Correct.
Okay. Now I understand.
All right. Cameron?
So Bob kind of asked the question I was going to ask, but why do we declare a drought now for five months in the future? Why not just declare the drought when we're going to enforce it?
This gives us a little bit of time to order citations and get a process in place.
So, I mean, is the intent of staff that we publicize the act? If, let's say, imagine we take the action tonight, right? So is the intent of staff that we then, you know, publicize it? Presumably, it'll be in the newspaper or other places. City council declares a drought, and here's, you know, what you should do to conserve water, even though, you know, the drought is not effective for five months in the future. That seems a bit odd to me, so I guess I'm wondering...
Excellent point. That does give us some time to do some outreach. We would probably send out flyers or postcards, and so that'll take a little bit of development plus mailing. So that does give us some time, because we think education really will be key to the success of this program.
But why couldn't we just declare that there's a drought today, which there clearly is? And then you do the outreach subsequent to the fact that we declared it.
Essentially, what you're doing is you're doing two things. You would be declaring that there's a drought tonight, but the enforcement measures would be effective May 15.
I see. Okay. All right. So the, okay, so those two things are clearly separated, you would say? And that, so we're declaring a drought, and we're saying we're not going to enforce it until May?
Right.
Okay.
Staying on the same line of questioning, couldn't, couldn't things be put in place, all the things you're talking about doing, ordering citations, et cetera, all that could be done without declaring a drought?
Oh, absolutely. We could inform people about the ordinance itself without declaring a drought. It's just that none of those enforcement measures would be in effect.
But they're not going to be in effect till May 15 anyways. So that's what I'm confused on, is why, why not wait until the water department does what it's going to do in April and so forth, or May, and then, you know, we see how the rest of the winter goes and so forth. And then declare, you know, if we want to declare a drought, let's do it in May, or in April, or, you know.
So...
I just don't understand the urgency right now.
So the reason that we're asking the council to declare tonight, or, there's no magic to tonight, but have a separation between the effective date and the declaration, is so that we can actually say, this is the decision that the city council has made. These are the things that are going to go into effect on such and such a date, the watering restrictions and those kinds of things. So we're publicizing to the public, you cannot do these things effective May 15. If we wait until May 15, and you pass the ordinance, then, you know, you're either, we wouldn't necessarily be telling the public now. We think the council might consider putting these restrictions in place on May 15, but we don't know.
But what about that dreaded day, April 15?
Right.
What if, no, so seriously, because I see what you're saying in part is, once you pass an ordinance, it still takes 30 days to go into effect. So if we waited till April... But the thing I'm looking at is, you know, yes, we're in a drought. We're in a four-year sequence here. But we still don't know how the winter's going to shake out. I don't know that anybody does. And, you know, if you've lived in California long enough, you know that some of the biggest snowstorms we get are in February and March, some of, you know, rain and snowstorms. Yes, the snowpack's down right now. Is it going to be down in, you know, in May? We don't know yet, because the winter's not over. The winter in, you know, California, up in the mountains especially, doesn't really end until, you know, sometime in late April, early May sometimes.
Matt, if I may, can I just ask a follow-up question to that? If we were to declare drought today, and then, you know, February, March, April turned into the biggest water years on record, what might we do? What would staff suggest that we suspend the drought emergency?
Well, we certainly can come back to council. If things, if things do change dramatically like that, I think it would behoove us to come back to council and say, these are the new facts. What do you think?
And, well, I don't know if you covered this or not in your presentation, because I had to step out of the room, but if at any time the governor were to rescind his declaration of a drought emergency statewide, that would automatically rescind ours, the way our ordinance is written.
Yes, either Cal Water or the governor needs to declare a state of emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think what we're talking about here, I mean, for me, is, as we've all recognized, we are in a drought right now. We've been in a drought for a while. That's why we adopted the ordinance a few months ago. In good conscience, it's not the kind of thing, because it's a relatively significant change, that we would suddenly slap on people and say, by the way, you're subject to fines starting tomorrow morning. So whenever we make the effective date, we're going to want some time between when we adopt it or trigger it, and when the effective date is. And to me, that's what staff is, admittedly, perhaps a little less than ideally, clearly, is suggesting, that we declare the emergency now, and we start our normal... is suggesting, that we declare the emergency now, and we start our normal process of saying, we're going to work with the community so that when, when the fines are actually potentially going to be levied, hopefully we will never have to levy any fines, because everybody will know, okay, this is really serious and we need to save water. So that's how I look at it. And if we were to defer the decision until after the winter, we'd still put the same 60- or 90-day shot clock on it, and then we'd be 60 or 90 days further out. And I personally would rather not do that.
Cameron?
One additional question. You mentioned there was a representative from Cal Water here. I just wanted to hear if Cal Water is supportive of the council declaring a drought emergency.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members and staff. My name's Tony Carrasco, District Manager for California Water Service Company. We are very concerned about our current water situation, obviously. We, I'm going to say, we as a whole community in the peninsula has done a remarkable job on conserving water thus far. I was at a presentation last week with the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission, and they're concerned but optimistic. This last storm was nice, but we need about 10 or 15 more of these to continue. We're very supportive of any programs that are going to help educate our customers, and I think we have a common goal here, and that's to, it's long-term. Whatever the city decides to do, we're going to fully cooperate with them and support that decision, and work with staff on a daily basis so that we can, again, achieve the same goal as we all have, and that's our future. Just really making sure that we can, that our customers understand, even in wet years, that they need to conserve, and really changing the culture, and that's what we're going to continue to do. So I don't know if that answers your question?
It does. Thank you.
Matt, did you have a question of Mr. Carrasco?
No, not of Mr. Carrasco, just of staff.
All right.
So this is similar to the question I had under the dog ordinance, or animal ordinance, whatever. In this case, if you, it talks in here about an appeals board. So if you lose that appeal, what's your recourse then?
That would be a legal question.
There would be, there's a, once the process in the city is exhausted, and if someone still feels that the, that they, either their rights weren't upheld, or if there was something about the process that wasn't fair to them, they could go to court. That'd be the next step after that. So you'd take the city up on a writ, saying, whatever the city did in implementing the ordinance, from their perspective's inappropriate. But, you know, I think the process is going to be either finding or notices of violations, and then a hearing. That's how it's going to be, if we get to that point. There's still discretion to give warnings if it's something that is not chronic, somebody's not repeating, doing it, they just get a warning, and that'll be part of the education process. But only after all that happens is we might need to go into the full enforcement. And I don't know if I answered your question, but that's how, first of all, citation, education, then citations or administrative hearing, and then if they still feel aggrieved, then they would have to go to court.
So why that, why is that a step necessary of a hearing? Here's my, here's, here's the way I look at it. I get, you know, I'm driving down St. Carlos Avenue, and I get pulled over for some kind of traffic citation. I go to traffic court. I don't go to, you know, I don't sit in Captain Rothhouse's office with City Manager and Jay Walter, because, you know, I'm on a public street, have a hearing for the citation. I go to traffic court. Why in this case do I go to?
Councilmember Growcott, I just pulled up the ordinance while you were bringing up this point. The appeals board is, for, if someone were, here's how it would come up in a citation standpoint. Someone got a citation, and they would say, wait a minute, that's not fair because of my personal circumstance. So they could come to the appeals board and ask for exceptions. So for instance, they have a, maybe they have a spa that has a health issue in it, and one of the restrictions is you can't refill your spa. So they would come in and say, I need an exception. So they could come, and there'd be a place where they could go for an exception under those circumstances. I'm trying to, in my mind, think of where someone would have an exception for, you know, watering without a cutoff valve on the hose, but the, some of the things might be held through it. Or you have a, you're getting your swimming pool remodeled. We have, we'll have, there's a prohibition on refilling your swimming pool, but we felt like it was important to have a process that someone could come in and say, you know, I really, I've got a crack in my swimming pool, it needs to be resurfaced, because I'm wasting more water than if I just, if I fixed it. So there would be a basis for getting relief from the code. And then primarily, the enforcement mechanism is going to be the county enforcement officer that we've hired giving tickets.
Well, I've got a couple of questions. I was wondering how they arrived at the fines, I mean, at setting the fines? Is this, is this taken from other model ordinances?
Yes.
Well, as, California has a provision for general law cities to impose fines. Our municipal code has a, has a fine schedule for first, second, and third offenses within a period of time, so we've just incorporated those fines.
Sort of a pro forma that we follow.
Yeah.
Okay. And then the other one is, are we getting many calls from residents complaining about other residents using too much water?
Not lately, but we've always referred them to Cal Water, so it might be something we'd need to ask Cal Water, anything.
It was, it was more so during the summer months. It has really kind of tailored off in the last couple of months. And they were, to be honest with you, they were very difficult. It was after the fact, and we didn't have all the information. We do have a couple of different mechanisms to receive the information, and a lot of it was, well, last night I had seen this, or early this morning I had seen this, I really don't have the address. So it was very difficult, but it's, we don't get as many of them today. But we had a very good December rainfall, and so I, and not a lot of people are watering.
Right.
And that's generally when you're doing them, where you're getting a lot of them. So it's really tater-lah. I can't give you the exact number.
That's, that's all right. My last question for you, though, is, between today and the end of the rainy season, what percentage of normal rain, you said we need 15 storms, or whatever that number is, would we need 200%, 250% of normal rainfall in order to get back to a non-drought situation? I mean, what, is there a number that the governor would finally say, this, this emergency's over?
Yeah. So I'm not too sure what the governor and his office would say, because they're looking at the whole state, and there's other reservoirs that are really low, there's other areas that are extremely low. And for the peninsula, currently, we're over 100% of normal. We need to be much higher than that. What we'd like to see, according to the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission, is to have about 150% of normal. If we were to have 100% of normal and very good snowpack, they would continue with the 10% throughout, throughout next year. Voluntary reduction. They feel very confident about that. So, so again, what we're really looking at, and it may take a couple of good years to get out of, out of where we're at now. We have quite a few reservoirs that are at 40 and 30%, so to get those built up. I would say at least 150% of normal.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anybody wish to speak on this matter? I don't have any speaker cards, but I want to ask. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Tara.
I move to adopt Resolution 2015 dash?
14.
14, a resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos declaring a drought emergency to implement the water conservation enforcement measures under Municipal Code Section 8 dot 10, effective, what are we saying?
May 15th.
May 15th, 2015.
Second.
All right. Motion to second and discussion?
There's one area that I think might need some discussion, and that is, Mark had brought it up about the fines. And while I don't necessarily see a situation where somebody might do something day after day after day, I suppose it could happen if, you know, you had a water leak or in your irrigation system or something, and you're not at home, and you don't know, and you can't fix it. That could get, you know, because after the first offense, and then the second offense, and then the third offense, you're at $500. If that was over an extended period, that could get quite high pretty quick. It seems to me there ought to be some type of maximum amount put on that, not just left out there.
So, Matt, I don't know, Greg, you want to?
Councilmember Growcott, I have, you know, I have some discretion in enforcing it, and each offense in this particular ordinance is going to have to be cited separately. It is possible that there would be a situation where I would feel, as the city's prosecutor, that the person is ignoring all efforts to get compliance with the code, and they really are wasting water. And it could be a number of different ways that they're violating the ordinance. It might not just be the leaking hose, it could be, they're doing this, they're doing that, they're just ignoring all the provisions that are incorporated in the ordinance for conserving water. I could have that kind of situation. I could also have the situation you described, if someone went on vacation and one of their sprinklers popped, and it's in the evening when they water, after 6:00, and they're in compliance otherwise, that it has the appearance of wasting water. I would make an effort under those circumstances to obtain compliance. That's the goal of this type of an ordinance, it's not to be punitive. So I would look at the facts and circumstances, so it wouldn't necessarily accelerate to the $500, but the, but as a tool, as a prosecutor, you want to have that ability to get someone's attention who is not otherwise voluntarily wanting to comply. And the way the ordinance is set up, I might add, is it's referring just back to our general penalty section in our code. Every infraction that I would charge as the city's prosecutor would have that same mechanism. So I, changing that part of the code would be more difficult than the resolution that you have before you tonight.
I appreciate your answer. I still think that having some type of cap is only fair, because I hear what you're saying, you probably wouldn't allow it to get to, you know, a point where it's inordinate amount. The fact remains, what's in writing is what's in writing. There is no cap, and that exposes the public to the possibility of a penalty that's inordinate with the cause.
Matt, if I may, you know, we're not debating the ordinance, we already passed the ordinance, so this is really just whether we want to trigger the enforcement. So even, even if you could get support for that idea, it's not agendized tonight. So we could, you know, if you want to pursue that, we could bring it back at a subsequent date.
And just to add for your peace of mind, if it helps, Matt, that provision of the ordinance hasn't changed in years, so any code enforcement violation could rack up like that, and we've never had an instance where that's happened.
Matt, I'd like to give you a real-life experience. We went on vacation about, well over 20 years ago during the last extended drought, and we did have a leak. And we came back, we didn't know it until we got back, but our water bill was huge, because we were gone, I don't know, 10 days. And the bill from Cal Water was, was just huge. But there was also a mechanism in there, and maybe Tony can tell us if this is still in effect, that after that, for, obviously, we got the leak fixed, after that, for every month that we stayed below whatever our baseline was, we got a credit. And it took six months, but I actually got that excess surcharge credited back over about six months, because I knew what the baseline was, and we stayed under it for that period of time. I don't know if that mechanism is still in effect, but it was the last time we had that six-year drought in the late 80s and early 90s. But I, maybe Greg can speak to whether or not there would be something a little bit more flexible for a person who did. And I guess what you've said is that if it's clearly a situation where there was, it was an accidental thing, and it wasn't willful abuse of the, of the, of the water restrictions, that there's some relief in the, in the law for that. Is that right?
I think that's where I would have discretion as the city's prosecutor. I also have discretion on the, on the second and third offense, should it ever come to that. Those, the first one says a fine not exceeding $100 for the first violation, second is $200, not exceeding 200. So I have some discretion in setting the per diem fine, if you will. It doesn't have to be the maximum fine, it just has to, it can go up to the maximum fine.
All right. Time to call the question.
Councilmember Sully?
Yes.
Councilmember Growcott?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes. All right, moving on to item 9F. Consideration of adopting a resolution supporting participation in a feasibility study of the Community Choice Aggregation Program for San Mateo County. Tara, once again.
Yes, once again. Saving the best for last. So, good evening, council. Tara Peterson, Assistant to the City Manager. We're here to discuss Community Choice Aggregation, and with us this evening, we have Mr. Jim Egomire, and he is the Director of the Office of Sustainability with San Mateo County, and he'll talk more about this program.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff and council. My name is Jim Egomire, and I am the Director with the Office of Sustainability with the County Manager's Office. I'm here tonight to request adoption of a resolution authorizing participation with the county and other cities in a technical study. And also to provide a short PowerPoint set of slides here, I have about a half a dozen. And first, I'd like to, a little disclaimer, and that is, Lean Energy is the county's consultant that we've hired in this endeavor. And I just, this is a set of slides that we've been using, or they've been using, at our outreach to city councils and, and other officials in the county. So, and then also, on behalf of Supervisor Pine, this was his initial idea a number of months ago, and in turn, he is at Burlingame tonight and was not able to attend, and our consultant is, Lean Energy is with him up there. So with that, I'd like to jump into a number of slides. The thing to focus in here is that what we're providing or looking into is community choice. And this is kind of a, state legislation allows a formation of a CCA. There are three CCAs in the state of California, Marin, Sonoma, and Lancaster is about to go live with their CCA right now in Southern California. So with the choice, we're also the ability to provide greening to our electrical grid, offering consumer choices, and also boosting local economies relative to that, because of the choice locally. So this is how it works. We're able to pool communities, cities and the county, together to essentially purchase and then develop power locally, on behalf of the residents, businesses, and municipal facilities. Keeping it local. So this is a This is a graphic that helps us understand how our partnership continues with PG&E. So in a CCA formation, you have a joint powers agreement in which they purchase and also build potential electrical supply locally, and in turn, it's delivered through the PG&E system. They maintain that, they continue to maintain it, is there a partnership with them that continues? And ultimately, at the other end, the customer, the counties, the city, and residents. So with that, what we're able to do is we are responsive to local environmental and economic goals. Our local environmental ones are really formed around our climate action plans that we've all been working on for a number of years and looking to implement. This is one way in which we can lower greenhouse gas emissions. Economic goals locally, offers the consumer choices where none currently exist. So this is in competition to PG&E's rates. It is revenue-supported, and the taxpayer has no subsidies involved with this at all. And what we've seen is in the past with Sonoma and Marin, is that it's able to offer stable, cheaper electric rates, and that's based on their particular circumstances, and we'll be studying that as the potential for ours. It also allows for rapid switch to cleaner power supplies and significant greenhouse gas reductions. So it is more on that line of thought relative to what PG&E is offering or will be offering in the future. And then it also provides funding for energy efficiency and innovative energy programs like energy storage and EV charging stations, because the joint power agreement keeps that locally, and revenues can then be looked at projects locally to then supply the power There are risks associated with it, and we've put them in basically into four categories. So rate competition and the market fluctuation. So the way I understand it, PG&E has the ability to raise their rates according to their circumstances. With a CCA, what they try to do is go out and buy long-term and short-term contracts and kind of keep it stable for a particular period of time. And the model has shown that it's relative to a year that CCAs are kind of getting in and setting their rates for a year's period of time. So they're able to hold it at that level. And then there's also the customer opt-out. So with the formation of a CCA, the customer is automatically put into this CCA formation. But there are customers who opt-out, and they provide, or they consider that they want to continue with the PG&E system and what they're offering. And there's also political risk associated with that, essentially relative to local policy objectives, and trying to find kind of the balance between appealing to both progressive and conservative minds, making environmental and business cases. So it in turn has kind of a political side, or could be at the formation of a CCA. And then the last is kind of more at the higher level, at the state-level regulatory and legislative aspects in which the legislation relative to CCAs. And there was one, AB 2145, that had some traction, but ultimately was not passed. So the next steps that the county is taking right now include continuing our outreach effort and to increase our database for people, stakeholders, people who are involved and wish to understand this particular CCA concept. And then we're also returning to the Board of Supervisors at the end of February, and in that, I'm going to be requesting the allocation of monies to move forward for our technical study. And what we're asking from cities is indicating your interest by an authorization electrical load data for the CCA technical study. And it's a rule from PG&E that we have to seek out and obtain either from the city manager or the city council, the adoption of a resolution allowing further information to be released from PG&E to our consultant for the technical study. We're also looking to help identify key stakeholders or groups in your areas. We continue our outreach effort, and we're looking for attendance at our CCA briefings and participating in future steering committee if one's formed. And for this initial Phase One, we're looking at absorbing the cost for this particular study, so there will be no anticipated cost to the cities for our technical study. And with that, that concludes my presentation, and I hope to obtain your support for the adoption of a resolution tonight.
Thank you very much. Can you remind me your name one more time?
Jim Egomire.
Thank you, Mr. Egomire, for your presentation. Questions?
Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Jim, thank you for the presentation, which I appreciate it. Just a quick question, and I was out of the room in the very beginning of your presentation, so I may have missed this. Where does the funding for your organization come from?
He's with the county.
I'm with the county.
Oh, I know where that money comes from. Let me, you know, try and save myself a little embarrassment here by shifting the scope of my question.
Right.
Where does the funding for rolling out the CCA concept come from? Is it each county, county-by-county basis? They opt in and say, we're going to allocate some of our budget to this?
I personally don't know how Marin and Sonoma came into existence. Our consultant was a mayor with the city up in Marin, and in turn, was very involved with the steering committee and the formation of that, in that there was some initial support from private entities that funded the initial efforts within, up in the northern part of the Bay Area. And so what we're looking to do here for this is, the county's participation is going to be funded here at this first phase, or three phases associated with. The first one is a technical study. At the completion of that, we're then going to be asking ourselves, do we want to continue in working for, or moving forward and going into Phase Two, which would be the formation of a JPA. So at that time, then we're going to be looking for partners or bank systems that might be able to partner with us to help us in the initial cost to get started. So all of the costs associated with the startup of a CCA is recoverable through the rate payers and what they pay. So we'll be looking to essentially return that money or the loan from the county, in this case, for Phase One. Phase Two would be a much larger amount because of the initial formation. And then working with the bank, what we're able to do is initiate the first 60 days, is what I'm understanding, because they have to be first converted over to CCA, consume the electricity, bill the electricity, and then pay back to the JPA. So the bank helps us move through this bridging aspect.
The working capital.
Right.
Essentially. So it sounds like that depending upon how the JPA gets structured, and assuming it moves forward, that there might be a situation in the future where the county would consider approaching the cities to contribute something towards getting this started, or is that too early to tell?
Too early to tell.
Okay.
We haven't even, internally, we meet every week and in the formation and moving forward with this, and that concept and that thought has not even crossed our minds, because the county is really looking to, Supervisor Pine and Supervisor Groom are really at the forefront of this idea and moving through, and really finding out, getting down into the technical study and really finding out what could be the positive benefits and making that decision to move forward.
Thank you. Thank you for helping me recover from that.
Cameron?
The formation of the JPA, what, how is that done legally? Does it require a vote of the people? Does it require a vote of the individual cities that want to participate? You know, how's the, what's the mechanism for creation of the JPA?
The way I've heard, both Marin and Sonoma, and the way they formed their JPA was around looking to their city councils, who wanted to participate, and then with that, then working with council and essentially figuring out the mechanism for involvement in the JPA.
And then what is your sort of rough timeline, do you think? Is this a one-year, three-year, or five-year? What do you, how, I know the process has just been kicked off, but can you share the rough timeline?
Yeah. So what we're looking at is the completion of our first phase, that's the technical studies, and then returning to the Board of Supervisors with that information in the, I believe we were saying, the fall time of this year. And then, let me see where that is, my staff report. Yes, it's September, and September, October, roughly, returning with a technical study and information in order to see if we're going to be proceeding into Phase Two, and then also our outreach to the cities with that information as well. And so, and then after that timeframe, it's roughly, what we're thinking about is getting into the fourth quarter of 2016 is when we'd be looking at...
Go live date?
Yes, if we go through Phases Two and Three.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right. Bob?
I don't know if you know the answer to this, but Lean Energy, I assume, is the consultant?
Yes.
And they, you indicated we have to authorize the electrical load, that's why we have to do a resolution? They'd be the ones that are going to be analyzing these numbers and...
No, not Lean Energy. Lean Energy is very effective in their outreach. They are not technical consultants, and so we'll be issuing, we're working on an RFP right now.
Okay.
Relative to the technical aspects.
Does Lean Energy continue on with this program, or is this just their outreach, and then they disappear when we set it up? Do you know? And again, I apologize, because how would you, you may not know, but I'm wondering...
We've had a very good relationship with Lean Energy because of their background and knowledge of this in the formation.
Right, no, I'm not discounting that.
So I would want to be trying to retain them through my office.
Sure.
Through the formation of this.
Certainly, through the formation, but after it's formed, do you anticipate?
Right. Because essentially, what happens is the JPA is formed, and they essentially hire staff.
Right. They could theoretically hire them again, but...
That's true.
Okay. So I'm just trying to understand the consultant concept, which tends, sometimes can go on, you know, till we're all dead.
Right, paying for consultants.
Yes, exactly. Thank you, okay, appreciate it.
Matt?
Thank you. So the, you talked earlier, you had a slide about the risks, but for what you're asking us to do tonight, there's virtually no risk at all, right?
Right.
Yeah. And then the last thing I was going to say is, if you don't go back to your boss and tell him that Mr. Obert's property tax needs to be raised until he understands where the county gets its money, you know. Are you listening down there, Mr.?
Yes, please, please, with my new house, my tax bill is already higher than this.
All right. Any other, any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Egomire.
Thank you for your time.
All right. We do have a speaker card, Gladwin D'Souza. Seems like we're pretty popular with Belmont these days.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. I'm Gladwin D'Souza from Belmont, and I'm Chair of the San Carlos Belmont Sierra Club. The Sierra Club has been a strong supporter of CCAs since we helped with the enabling legislation in 2002. We see it as a way to reduce your greenhouse gases, up to one-third, according to a study from City of San Mateo. And we see three positives for the city. One is providing more choice to your constituents. The other one is reducing rates, especially for businesses, and the third is getting more of, sorry, I lost my train of thoughts over there. And we are really fortunate in San Mateo County that Supervisor Pine and Groom have taken the lead on helping us get to a CCA. It was a painful process in Marin. It took quite a while in Sonoma, and I think the effort that San Mateo County is doing is going to help us get to this solution much faster. So thank you for your attention to this matter. Hope forward to your ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. D'Souza.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2015 dash...
Fifteen.
Fifteen, a resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos expressing support to participate in a feasibility study of a Community Choice Aggregation Program for San Mateo County.
I second.
Motion to second, any discussion?
And a third.
Mr. Mayor, I'll just say, you know, I'm very supportive of this program. You know, many of us, and many of us in the Bay Area, and many of us in the country and around the world are very concerned about climate change. Oftentimes, the city tries to do things to help reduce our carbon footprint, and we focus usually on city facilities. You know, we put in LED lights, we've put in other things in City Hall to reduce electricity usage, and that's important, and it shows leadership, but it has a relatively small impact to the overall problem. You know, it's rare when we have an opportunity to empower residents, businesses to reduce their carbon footprint. The EPA says that electricity generation accounts for about a third of all greenhouse gas emissions, and we see, anybody who walks around the peninsula, drives around the peninsula, sees people making green choices all the time. If you're concerned about greenhouse gas emissions for vehicles, you can buy an electric vehicle, or Prius, or a hybrid, et cetera. People are doing this because they're concerned. You can see solar panels on roofs. But for most people, if you're concerned about electricity generation, the only choice you have is to put solar panels on your roof, and if you're a renter, you can't do that, and if you're, there's lots of other reasons why that might be infeasible or too expensive. And so this offers a really simple way for people to have choice. And at large, if this, if this, if these types of programs are rolled out across California, across the country, it can have a huge impact in the amount of greenhouse gas emissions that are generated from electricity. So I'm very excited, I hope, we'll see how the vote turns out, but I'm very excited for us to be taking a lead in the county on this. I think it's a big deal, and I think it's going to be important going forward.
All right, thank you. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will repeat all of Cameron's sentiments, because I agree with him. I think this is, offers a bunch of wonderful options, assuming it actually comes to fruition for our residents. I do hope that, assuming the vote turns out successfully tonight, that the staff will make sure that this gets incorporated in our communications outreach to the community about, even at the early days, about what's there. And finally, the only other thing I'd say is, which I suspect, Jim, that you already know, is you guys really need to come up with a better name for the program, because particularly the one, you know, the state is sticking it with Community Choice Aggregation. It's like, what the heck does that mean?
All right, Matt?
Just a couple of comments. First one is, you had mentioned in your presentation about appealing to both progressives and conservatives. Well, I'm the conservative. You probably could tell that by watching our council meeting tonight. And I do think this has a big appeal. I don't believe in global warming, I don't care about climate change, but to me, it just is common sense, you know? And when I was in high school, I took architecture classes, and I did this project where I designed a solar home. I was in high school in 1977, and I'm just amazed at how far solar hasn't come in that time period. Obviously, in '77, people knew about it, but it just really hasn't gone anywhere, and I suppose a lot of it has to do with economics. But it's just, you know, it's refreshing to see stuff coming around and going in this direction, because it just makes sense to use solar, if you can, to, you know, we had the guy here earlier, and he was hitting on some of the regeneration projects that they're doing, and I think all that stuff's wonderful. So I'll vote for this, it's a, it's a, it's a good project.
Bob?
We... We're supporting this project. I think we all should realize that anytime we have options, it's a great idea. I think it's going to get our local public utility off the dime a little bit, and maybe get them working on a lot more alternative energy sources. But realistically, let's not kid ourselves that this is a panacea to solve all the problems. And even though the costs are lower in some of the other issues, you, as I, we had it, I think when I went to CCAD that night, we had a, substituting for Mark, we had a, something given to us, and depending on how you pick, it can be more expensive. Not saying that's a bad thing, because you get to choose how you want to do it. So I just want to make sure everybody has their eyes open on this, that it's a great idea for options, and I think it's going to be terrific analysis, but it may not be like 40 or 50% cheaper. It might be just as expensive or whatever, but it is going to be better for our society and for our environment, I think, no matter what we go with it. And again, I think also we'll get PG&E off the dime, to be quite blunt.
All right. Great comments. I'll just say I'm excited that the movement toward energy efficiency is gathering steam. Crystal?
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Growcott?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes. And with that, I believe we're adjourned.
Is that the only 5-0 vote we had tonight? I think so.